So it is seven o'clock. I would like to call to order this committee of the whole meeting for the Urbana City Council. Can I have a roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry, clerk.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Right, the first item on the agenda is our approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of August 2nd, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any correction or discussion on the minutes? Mary Alice?
Yes, so I noticed as I was reading this and I was reminded that typically in meeting minutes, we have kind of a summary of the questions that were asked, also the discussion, in addition to who presented it, who actually put it on the, for approval, and then the votes. And so I was hoping that we could have a brief discussion in terms of whether or not that that was desirable. I personally find it very desirable when I'm looking at board meeting minutes. It helps me understand what the conversation was about for items that come before city council. So my proposal is that we expand upon our normal meeting minutes. I don't think I need a vote or just a...
Any other comments on that? Grace?
I'd agree with that. I think it is a lot easier to follow that way, like when we see some of the commission meetings and some are more robust than others. And I do find it really helpful to have that discussion piece in there so you don't have to watch, go re-watch the whole thing, because I think that's maybe the argument, that people could go re-watch it if they want to know more. But I think it would definitely be helpful to have a little bit more of the discussion and question content in there.
Other comments? Mary Alice, would you take the chair for a moment?
Yeah, absolutely. So the chair recognizes James Quisenberry?
Yes, I would, I would, I am usually a believer in minutes being succinct and brief. I do believe that we could have some more detail than we are currently getting. I am not looking for a transcript, but some summary and a little more detail would be appreciated.
All right, I relinquish the chair. Back to Councilmember Quisenberry.
Right, any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of passing the minutes say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? That passes unanimously. Before we, okay, are there any additions to the agenda for tonight? Okay, before we move on to our next item, which is public input and presentations, I will note that because of limitations on occupancy, we are limited to 16 seats for the public tonight. And we would suggest that after people speak, if they, if they can, they, if they can leave, if there are people waiting outside to come in, it doesn't look like there's anybody waiting to come in at this point, so that may not be necessary. You can, of course, watch what's going on live at our livestream.com/urbana and on Comcast Xfinity Channels 6 and 10, 96, and I3 broadband on Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse on Channel 99. So it doesn't look like we're in that state right now, but if people would consider that, if they make their statement and they don't need to stay for the meeting, make room for more individuals to make public comment. So moving on to public comment, the first person that I have a card for is Julie Watkins. Julie, please have a seat in front of one of the microphones.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is on now?
Yep, we can hear you good.
Okay. I was talking about the agenda. I want to thank you for putting a link to the livestream on the agenda. That will be helpful when I leave so I can rejoin the meeting. I'd still rather be able to give public input via Zoom. And I wanted to say that listening to the Zoom, to the zoning board variance discussions in last week's meeting, I noted that the, for the porch discussion and other discussions, that input by neighbors was being taken seriously. And I think it's good for the city that the city system does that. And I'm also listening and I want to join others who have made public input in support of the SWIFT program. It will make a big difference in the lives of Urbana residents. It can help. And I also join in public concern about shut offs, housing insecurity, evictions, and accountability. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Next up, I have a card that says Tracy. That's all that I have on here. Tracy, yes, I did.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chung. On the agenda tonight is the proposed change to the annual staff amendment process, I mean, appointment process. In the memorandum from Elizabeth Henon, the HR and Finance Director, addressed to Mayor Marlin, it is proposed that 13 positions will continue to be appointed. However, what is very concerning is that Mayor Marlin and city staff are proposing that the appointments, which include Urbana Police Chief and Deputy Chief, could be done as infrequently as once in a mayor's term. This means that since the last controversial appointment was held a couple of months ago, it is likely that none of you city council members will be able to vote again on their appointments in your current term. Are you willing to give up this voice? You represent the public. How is this change suggested by Mayor Marlin in the interest of the public? Please keep in mind the events that have led up to this proposed change. We currently have a police chief and deputy police chief who do not have the interest of Urbana residents in mind. We have seen Urbana Police Leadership fail to address incidents of excessive use of force, fail to identify officer misconduct, and themselves commit dishonest actions like suppressing evidence of officer misconduct and presenting false narratives to justify excessive use of force. When residents brought up concerns about the reappointment process pertaining to police leadership, two years in a row, Mayor Marlin interfered with the appointment process and tried to remove the contentious positions from appointments without the consensus of city council. She then framed the issue as that these were unnecessary positions on the list, and instead of just addressing this issue, today on the agenda, we see her drastic move to abolish the requirement for an annual appointment process. Is this move in line with Urbana's mission and value? In the memorandum, Mayor Marlin lists all the different examples from different, different cities and tries to use that as an excuse to why we have to do this. But let me ask you guys, shouldn't Urbana be a leader in innovation? Why are we, why do we always do this? Why do we choose the most conservative city out there and try to say that this is what we should do? Why are we not looking at what's more progressive? Why are we not looking at examples and being, being a leader instead of just following and trying to do the bare minimum and using those examples to justify it? Another thing to consider is diversity. Urbana does, receives lots of applications. For example, for the community engagement coordinator, Urbana received over 100 applicants. So, for example, if you have the appointment process once in four years, you may be missing out on the opportunity to, to hire, to be able to have a more diverse staff. So please take this into consideration. When you make such a big decision, if you have the voice and ability to, to make decisions every year, every decision does not have to be something really safe, because you can do it every year. So I hope Urbana sees itself as a leader and not, and doesn't try to just follow the most conservative example out there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next card I have is for someone who wants their support noted but does not wish to speak. Carol Enskeep is sharing a card in support of ordinance 2021-08033R. Strong support for that, which I believe is the resolution to the intergovernmental agreement for the American Rescue Plan Act. Next up, I have Alan Max Axelrod.
Good evening. My name is Alan Max Axelrod. I'm the campaign lead of No Ammon Shutoffs, a zero-dollar-all-volunteer coalition of 49-member organizations and counting, spanning the state of Illinois, north and southeast and west. I'm also talking to you today in my capacity as Champagne Urbana DSA co-chair. Some months ago, I spoke to you all about the need to adopt an eviction diversion program like that in Rock Island County. As of, I believe, Administrative Order 2021-09 from our District Court, that has been instituted indefinitely. However, the funding will run out June 30th of 2022. You have, as we have seen before, canceled city council meetings due to insufficient agenda items. I would suggest that before June 30th of 2022, the city of Urbana adopt into its tenant ordinance the eviction diversion program to ensure its continuity. The parameters are already defined in the administrative order from our chief district judge. I'd also like to note that since the last time we spoke about President Biden's musings about needing to pay people $100 to get vaccinated, The New York Times before that had reported that Democrats and Republicans responded to a monetary incentive to get vaccinated. This is because some other states, such as New Mexico perhaps, West Virginia perhaps, and, oh man, Maryland, I think was one, had offered exactly that incentive. Since then, New York has adopted it, and the state of Minnesota has adopted it. So when I'm talking to you about adopting a policy for paying people to get vaccinated, there's one additional subtlety to take note of. It need not be done through our American Rescue Plan dollars. Minnesota's is a state program. New York's is a state program. New Mexico's is a state program. Last year, August 13th, 2020, the mayor spoke to Governor Pritzker about pandemic safety issues. Thank you for doing that. I would like to recommend that that line of communication be used for the purpose of advocating for this policy to be adopted statewide. I was just in Decatur an hour and a half ago. In Decatur, they're struggling to even adopt masking policies indoors. In Decatur, they have, as a county, Macon County, has the same vaccination level as the state of Mississippi. They won't be helped unless other cities step up. I also want to note the Support for Workforce Training Program. We again canvassed the Garden Hills area this past week. When we canvass, we are asking people to support the statement saying that the cities of Urbana and Champagne shall engage in an intergovernmental agreement to increase the stipends for all those enrolled in the program and to increase enrollment of the program. Due to a prior remark, we have added a column in our petition that allows people to opt in to being contacted about the Support for Workforce Training Program for the purpose of enrollment. We already have more than half the number of people who were in the program last year who have expressed interest. And to provide some concerning context, there are 17 institutions through the Workforce Equity Initiative. Parkland is one. The average enrollment for an institution for the Workforce Equity Initiative is 243. Last year was 52 in Parkland. Seventy-five percent of those enrolled in this program are black. While we're talking about addressing crime and bringing equity into communities that experience high crime, this is a program that does it. The data on their own website shows that. So what we are asking for and are continuing to petition for, both in Garden Hills and through the Party Socialism Liberation in Silverwood, we are continuing to ask for the cities of Urbana and Champagne to support this initiative through an intergovernmental agreement. And I'm encouraged to see an intergovernmental agreement about the American Rescue Plan before the government tonight, before the city government tonight. I think that it should be supported because it would be a very terrible thing for the finances to be mess managed in any particular way. And I think the county's resources are aptly suited for providing that support. And I suppose, lastly, one thing that I'd like to note is, you notice people aren't bringing their phones to livestream their comments to you, right? There are other communities that have significantly less trust in their public bodies. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, I have another person who wants to share their support for the special use permit, Matthew Murray, strongly supports the approval of the special use permit for the units at 206 and 208 East California. And next up, I have Jeffrey Newton.
Okay, good day. I'm here, my name is Jeffrey Newton, first of all, and I'm here in support of homelessness. Urbana Township, in other words, is purchasing some homes, in other words, right now to house women and children. But there's some people in the area, in other words, that don't want them in their area. You know, they want the house that's built someplace else, I don't know where. But the thing about homelessness is that a lot of people don't know what homelessness is, you know? And even though you're just one check away, you too could be homeless. The things about, rent is going up. It's getting higher because this is a student's town, more or less. And a lot of the landlords, in other words, are raising their rents, you know, to fit the students or the parents that are paying for this, in such other words. That was one of my circumstances, because I was paying $375 once. See, I was homeless myself there for a while. And I was paying $375. And he wanted to raise the rent up to $750, which I couldn't afford. Because he wants to move students in, because it's a lot more convenient, a lot more money and such. Excuse me. Now, the thing about being homeless, I was out there with other homeless people, and each and every day I ride around on my bike and I see homeless people. I'd see them under vitals sleeping. I'm talking about 40 or 50 people at a time. Some mental, some have problems, issues, such as drinking or drugs and such. But then there's some out there that are just lost, seeking some help. Urbana Township took me a long ways. I have to say this, they worked with me, of course, they made me work too. Because I had to go out, find places, put applications in. Each and every day I did this. Well, to this very day, I'm in a housing now, at affordable rent and such. And they've stuck with me every bit of the way. But there's other people out here that need support, you know, and especially women with children. And I see them each and every day as I go to the soup kitchen and such, and they're out there. And this is the program that I think ought to be put in place, because there's a lot of families out here right now, in other words, due to the pandemic or financial, and it all fits into one, you know, in such other words, you know? So I think this is something that needs to be done and improved and not, and supported. And I support it each and every way because I know what it's like to be out there homeless. Now, not all homeless people are bad people now. Don't get me wrong, of course, they're not all good people neither. You know, I mean, there's, you always have a few rotten eggs in a dozen. But I'm quite sure their screening process is going to be a lot heavier, where they're going to screen the person that they put into these houses. But like I said, first of all, they're going with women and children and such. And I hope that you support this, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, I have Marilyn Heinsohn.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Heinsohn. I live at 206 East California. I am one of the only two residents that will be residing there for the remainder of 2021 and until the summer of 2022, due to the fact that I had a lease. I would just like to let you know, because I know that with talking to the planning board two weeks ago and hearing Danielle Chenoweth at the hearing that was held at the library, this is a done deal, and I've accepted the fact that this is a done deal, that you're going to pass this resolution to make this housing unit for the homeless. And I'm not contesting that at all. And I believe that, you know, people need a place to go to. I just want you to be aware of some of the situations and the condition of that property for children as well as the disabled. She listed six units that were accessible for disabled people. That is not true. I live on a ground floor level. I have to step up four inches to get into my apartment. So I'm just letting you know that there are things that need to be done to make sure that if what she says is true is actually going to happen. The other thing is, I mentioned at the hearing a couple of weeks ago that my grandson, who is three, was visiting me and stuck his head through the railing. I almost had a heart attack, because if you know anything about kids, sometimes they go through and they don't come back out. I mentioned that to Ms. Chenoweth here, that several, about a month ago, you all remember that meeting, I mentioned it to her in the foyer and her, you know, idea of fixing is, oh, we'll get to that. No, you don't need to get to that. You really need to take care of that before you approve for occupancy. I just want you to know, because the city does not need that responsibility of a child getting hurt. That little play area is not gated in. That needs to be done before you approve for occupancy. The upstairs railings are very shaky on the two apartments that have two bedrooms. She mentioned that to me. And yes, but that needs to be taken care of. Currently, I noticed in the paperwork for this evening that it said they were going to replace the floors. Currently, they are replacing the floors. They're putting in wood floors, which is going to be very accessible for wheelchairs. But like I said, on my side, you know, they need to address the sidewalk issue. And then the upstairs apartments, there is only one door coming. Well, you really need to go and look at that because of a fire incident. The balcony is one place to go out. The door that's into the apartment is another exit. But if the fire is in that area, they can't get out unless there's a ladder or something out the back. So I just want you to be aware that there are some things that need to be taken care of before, as she wanted to put people in there at the end of this month. I just think that things need to be taken care of because the safety of children is very important. My, my own grandchildren run out into that parking lot and I have to yell at them. That needs to be gated, because on Saturday morning, that parking lot is full, just full of cars. And they're not looking for little tiny kids. That apartment building never had children. I mean, I haven't been there a long time, but I know the residents that did live there, and there was one child this last year, but she was hardly ever there. So I just want you to be aware that I know you're going to approve the, the purpose for the buildings because they're, now they're vacant. Everyone has moved out, except for the two of us that are, have been approved to live there for the next year. But I just don't want someone to get seriously hurt and come back to the city, because all these meetings have been recorded. And I've, you know, told them, I've talked to you guys now. I just want you to be aware that when you approve it, that you should make sure that it is approved and ready for children and families to move in, even the electrical. You know, the other day, I don't know if you're aware, the fire department was there because there was a gas smell. I didn't talk to them. All I know is Cunningham Township, I was concerned because it was the apartment above me. I just wanted to know what it was. And she said, oh, the fire department came and they said it was fine. Is it really fine? I thought you had to call Amarin. I don't know. But I just think that you should be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have two more, but they have both asked to speak at the, at the time of the agenda item, and we'll, we'll call you up before we address those agenda items. I do also want to mention, I think the rest of the council probably saw this as well, I think I received about 23, maybe a few more emails in support of the special use permit. We can share those with the clerk as part of the record, but there was a, there was a bunch of them. And so I just want to make sure, Lilia Garcia, you want to speak at the moment of the item being addressed? You'd rather speak now? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so my name is Lilia Garcia. I'm an Urbana resident, and I also work at Cunningham Township. So tonight, I'm speaking in favor of the special use permit for the California Avenue properties. During the summer, I played a backup role for helping my coworkers run our emergency housing program. While in this role, I was able to experience the impact that this program has on families and individuals. Even just being accepted into the program produces so much relief for our clients. Having a warm and safe place to sleep truly means the world to them. From start to finish, case managers work with clients to ensure their immediate needs are met and to sign them up for all available options. Whether the clients are in our program for 30, 60, or 90 days, they're grateful for the program's accommodation and the stabilization it provides. Passing the special use permit will allow our families to become more stable and to stay integrated within the community. The California Avenue properties are an amazing location, with schools, downtown, grocery stores, and the Cunningham Township nearby. Our families are resilient and stronger than we'll ever know. The special use permit will keep, the special use permit will allow Cunningham Township to serve more households and make progress towards ending homelessness in Urbana. I'm excited to see the progress that will be made if this permit were passed. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. And Sarah Nixon, you want to wait until item 13? Okay. Thank you. Did anybody else want to address the council tonight? Seeing no one, we'll move on to staff reports. Do we have any staff reports? Mayor Marlin?
Just a, just a quick update on a couple of things. One, you might have read that the census data was released last week, and preliminary figures show Urbana with a decrease of approximately 7% in population, which was actually pretty surprising. So we are in the process of starting to look at block by block numbers to identify possible trends and reasons for the decrease, and then we'll decide what our options are going forward. But we're beginning to look at this on a pretty granular level to see what's going on, particularly what the impact of the shutdown of the university to in-person classes exactly the same time... uh, shutdown of the university to in-person classes exactly the same time the census was being taken. So we'll keep you posted on that. Secondly, I wanted to let folks know, you'll have a heads up on, um, in your packet, this Thursday, council members will have a copy of the revised use of force policy. That's been in the works for the past um, nine or 10 months. And then um, we'll be giving an overview of the new policy at next Monday's meeting. So that policy will be in the packet and of course, available to the public as well when it's posted. Thanks.
Just a quick question. Could, could the uh, census uh, track data and from, that we received with the current census? And the most recent data that we have from previous census? Could that be made available to the community on the, on the city website? Because it would be helpful to have everybody looking for trends or issues. Is that?
Yeah, eventually. It's just not there yet. What, what was released last week was um, what's the word to use? The complicated version of the data. So it has to be translated and, and into a usable format.
Cause I would love to look at certain tracks and see, see what happened there because
Yeah.
As you mentioned, there were things going on in certain parts of our community. Um, buildings being closed that normally would have 700, 800 people in them.
Like a certain residence hall, yes.
Possibly, yes. Um, and, and so if we could target
Yes.
A special census or a corrective census, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, no other staff reports? Okay, so we'll move on to item number six, which is Resolution Number 2021-08033R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for project and fiscal management of American Rescue Fund Plan Act. And are we gonna have a presentation on this?
Uh, I'll, I'll just give a brief overview and if, and I'd like to invite Kathy Larson and Ashley McLaughlin just to have a seat at the table in the event that there are questions. Kathy and Ashley are from uh, the Regional Plan Commission and they'll be working on this project with us in case we have any questions. So uh, the uh, resolution that you have before you is uh, for a proposed agreement for project and fiscal management of the city's American Rescue Plan Act funds. And uh, this will provide us with very needed staff support to go through the public engagement process that you all are interested in um, having to determine the priorities. And then assist us with um, soliciting proposals that are responsive to those priorities. As well as doing the required federal reporting on both the, the money side of things as well as the performance side of things, once we actually engage one or more entities in, in doing the, the actual implementation work. So um, you, I briefly describe in the memo uh, sort of the broad strokes of what we plan on doing between the um, the concept plan, the proposals, and then the federal reporting. The, the um, public engagement process hasn't been designed yet. Um, but because we need the help of these fine people and um, you know, we'll be walking through those, those ideas with you as we develop them. But for now, we need to have this agreement so that we can get um, our relationship solidified. Uh, last week, you passed the budget amendment to um, to uh, transfer uh, a hundred thousand dollars towards this effort. And um, this is the next step in that and then we can all get to work. So if, I'm happy to answer any questions, as are Kathy and Ashley.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Chris.
Yeah, Carol, um, on the second page under the concept plan, um, you say in the second paragraph, rather than receive requests for funding that reflect the priorities of those making the proposals, it will be more effective to have the council members establish long-term outcomes you would like to achieve. It sounds like we're shutting the public out here.
Not, not at all.
Okay, tell me what, tell me what that.
Okay, the idea is, we want ideas from the public. What are your priorities for broadly speaking? Not asking for money, but what do you, what do you want the, the council to prioritize in terms of, of how to spend this money? So do you want to spend it on homelessness? Do you want to spend it on gun violence? Do you want to spend it on um, you know, early childhood education? And talk about what those priorities are, absent proposals from specific people. Decide what those priorities are and then decide what does success look like in moving the needle on that, on that priority? And then, once you decide, say you wanted to reduce homelessness by half. I'm just making something up. I know the township wants to eliminate it, but I'm just making up in them. So, and then, and then you say, okay, now we want proposals from people on how to cut homelessness in half. So they're responding to something specific and they're giving, rather than saying, well, my group does X and so I would like the money for X, when we haven't evaluated whether that's the actual priority of the council. It's more efficient for you to engage the public to say, what are the needs of this community that you most want to have addressed? And then receive proposals that are directly responsive to that.
So the council determines what the overall concepts are, or the public, which, which is it?
There will be a public engagement process to determine what, what your priorities are. Many communities, what they've done, rather than trying to take their money and spread it as, as widely as possible. We've heard that people want to do transformative change. That means you have to focus your efforts. And in order to focus, you have to select one or possibly more priorities. That should all be determined at the council level with public input.
Thank you, Carol.
All right, Mary Alice, I saw your hand up.
Yes, um, so I, I realize that I might be getting into the weeds here a little bit, but I just kind of want to look at the overall picture here. Um, and maybe to piggyback a little bit off of what Chris was asking. So it sounds to me like um, first of all, the person or the entity that would be kind of doing all the legwork, all the background work would be Regional Plan Commission. And that would mean the public input process. Then the Regional Plan Commission would pull together all those resources and all that information. Then city council will then talk about what are the goals that we want to be able to implement in the grant process. Stop me if I'm wrong. I'm just trying to.
You're right, keep going.
Okay, all right. And then um, then there will be a development of some kind of rubric to evaluate all the proposals. And then based on that information, it would be presented again to city council for final approval for the awards.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear that that kind of is a linear process that we're, we're talking about.
Yeah, it's, it is linear.
Okay, so the, the two um, questions I have is one on the very back in terms of the budget detail. Uh, the very last statement says that the amounts identified herein being based upon the city receiving its full allocation. Um, my question is, is this going to be kind of prorated? So for example, if we get 75% of the funds instead of 100%, would that make this amount be 75%?
No.
So we would still.
I think it would have to be recalibrated. I mean, um, it, it's not a, it's not a dollar for dollar, like um, that this is 100% and if we get 50%, then the numbers are 50%. Not at all.
So do we need anything in the agreement that talks about how that would be recalibrated or what the process would be?
I think we have something written in uh, that allows for uh.
There's a 75% that you talk about um, on uh, under 8C, but that's services performed by the commission.
It's, well, under numbered, uh, paragraph nine, section nine on page three. Uh, the terms of this agreement are contingent on the city receiving the ARPA allocations as described in attachment A. Any change to such allocations may require changes to the terms of this agreement. Additionally, either party may, from time to time, request changes in the terms of this agreement, including the scope of services included in attachment A. So one thing I, I do want to point out is that, I mean, we made a good faith effort to determine um, what, what the um, level of effort was going to be here. But it's, it's going to be different. If the council decides they want to do 10 things, it'll be different than if the council decides they want to do one thing. So, you know, we're kind of shooting in the dark a little bit. Um, and so, I mean, we have a wonderful working relationship with the RPC. And if, you know, if there's some kind of uh, changes that need to be made to this agreement, they'll come back to you.
Okay, and then um, my final question is for RPC. Under the uh, the whereas here, it says that um, you'll be providing resources including research and analysis of project recommendations. Is that the kind of evaluation, the rubric that I was just talking about? What is that?
Yeah, so a lot of the analysis will be related to what's eligible under ARPA. And then according to what your public input and your plans already indicate that your goals are and what your decision process looks like of what types of projects you want to support. Um, so analysis will range on a variety of topics for this whole project. Just depending on what kind of feedback you get and what kind of projects, you know, to determine if they're eligible or not for this funding.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
If I could just interject too, another, I think, important thing that, that we had talked about with RPC that they're, that um, they're will be providing to us is also having an understanding, are there other sources of funds that can be part of ARPA that maybe aren't our specific allocation? That could be tapped to do that, to, to advance that particular effort without taking the city's money? And are there other efforts that are overlapping, duplicative, or that we could join in, that we would leverage our funds more? And I think that's an important piece that they're going to bring to us too.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm gonna ask a quick question here. When you say leverage other ARPA funds, um, are you talking about perhaps the county has money that would line up with something that we want to do? And do it from the county level instead of us paying for it?
Or, yeah, that's, that's a good example, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead, Grace.
You get, get good peripheral vision there, James. Um, uh, I was wondering, uh, okay, I got a few notes here. I'll start with some comments, thoughts. Um, I agree with some of the interesting, I don't know, concerns about some of the interesting language about setting priorities. I do think that needs to be a public process. Um, it does mention that in here, but then, yeah, there's also the point of, you know, council setting the long-term uh, outcomes. And I think that needs to be a very publicly engaged process and I do think that we need to hear from all of the input, even if it's not the thing that we decide. Um, and ideally, having the public, you know, very involved in the process of setting the big priorities and then involved in obviously making the proposals.
Absolutely.
Um, but I think that definitely needs to be a process because there's probably plenty of things out there that we don't know are priority amongst our limited number of brains, but that we can hear from the community. So I think that we need to not rule anything out. Um, specifically with that, in the agreement, um, yeah, I would like to see um, all proposals really to council. I don't know if there's a way to put that in there, but I would like to see proposals, even ones that are, you know, rejected and don't come to us, at least, you know, a little summary of what it was, maybe why it didn't go through. Um, to again, just get some of those things that we might have, we might not have known were a priority. Even if they're not a good candidate for this, just to know that it's something else we could work on.
Well, they're not, RPC isn't here to filter anything. They're here to organize, you know, help, help us organize, help us do the outreach and stuff. But they're not, we're not trying to withhold any information.
Yes, I understand. It sounded like I was trying to find it here, that there's a process for um, evaluating proposals and selecting ones that are presented to us, correct?
Well, they're, they're going to be racked and stacked, but if you want to see the ones, for, for instance, if, if one is determined to be ineligible for um, ARPA funds, then if you want to see what those were, no problem.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I would like that, just with some of the details of the process. I think, you know, um, giving us, you know, your recommendations is good, but also to see the whole picture, to see what didn't pass, um, would also be helpful, just to know what else was requested from the public. I think that would be useful information. Um, what else? I was also wondering about the timeframe of the dispersal of funds, um, about going to 2027. I was just wondering um, kind of what that was, if most of that was the follow-up and the reporting of the grant-receiving agencies? Or if this would be still dispersing funds until 2027, kind of if we had a plan for that?
Well, I think it remains to be seen how we, whatever proposals we ultimately get to advance whatever the priorities are, it remains to be seen how that will be paid out. I mean, w- we don't know what we're going to be funding, so we don't know how. But we'll be reporting, potentially funding, um, you know, dispersments and then the performance of the, the entities that are implementing. We have to re- report their performance too, as I understand it.
All right, Mayor Marlin.
I could add a little bit to that. I believe that according to the interim treasury guidelines, the money has to be either spent or obligated by December 31st of 2024. And then um, obligated by 2024, spent by 2026, December 31st. And then probably there's a reporting period after that. But there are, the, the federal government has set the timeline for obligating and spending these funds. And also the reporting requirements, which is why we need RPC's help on this.
All right, Grace, are you, are you done?
I just have another one.
Okay, keep going.
Okay, thank you. Where was I here? Um, other comments? Um, oh, okay. Uh, I hope that we can have some coordination with the comp plan too. I like the things in there about, you know, sending data. I imagine that a lot of that is what it is.
Yes.
Um, and I also liked the part with achieving equity-oriented results. Um, I appreciate you guys' experience and expertise in this. Um, and I think that's a great partnership and look forward to some of that collaboration with the work that they're already doing, like with the comp plan and other stuff. I think that a robust application definitely makes sense, especially with lots of funds. Um, and I think it's interesting, maybe balancing robust enough application and also not discouraging applicants based on um, some of the requirements. So I imagine you have expertise in that, but just a concern of, you know, uh, robust application, but also not discouraging. And had specific question if the 2021 amount was already paid? Cause we just approved the 100,000 and that's the 2022 on here, is that correct? Is the 2021 already paid?
Well, the, the 100,000 is an approximation of what will be spent in the remainder of Cal, or FY fiscal year 2022, which is the fiscal year we just started. So it will be, it will be all of, I mean, these again are estimated amounts, but presumably all of 2021 and approximately half of 2022, um, that, we haven't paid them anything, but they will, they will um, issue us requisitions and we will pay as we go.
So the 100,000 that we just allocated was the only thing allocated or paid, so?
Correct.
Okay.
But it hasn't been paid. It's been allocated. It's, it's set aside. It's available to pay. And they will send us, you know, bills as we go along.
Okay, thanks. That was my next question too, about this, the estimated cost, and I was wondering how the actual cost and that'll be billing from RPC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, thank you, that's all.
All right, Chair.
This might be getting in the weeds a little bit, um, but I'm looking at the program plan requirements, the kind of suggestion of what that could look like and noticing that there's a, a piece in there about previous experience with federal grants, which is pretty typical for federal grants. But when we're thinking about community needs, I see that there's something in there about kind of um, being able to make exceptions or case by, case exceptions, so that if we have like a new initiative where maybe the organization doesn't have that previous experience, that that would be something that would be evaluated as part of a more comprehensive evaluation of that particular proposal. Is that correct?
Yeah, although we did want to be pretty upfront about, you know, the expectation that we all have to care about performance on this. So, yeah.
Yeah, just want to make that clarification of it's not just open to existing agencies, but there could be a new initiative that could get its foundation with this funding.
As long as there's no prohibition in the ARPA rules, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Dan?
Just a comment, remind people that we, the city has received the first half of the allocation. So approximately um, six and a half million dollars is in the bank.
All right, Mary Alice.
I just have one follow-up question, um, since we've been talking a lot about public input. And if this gets approved, which I can't see it, not getting approved, when can we expect to start hearing some of the details of that plan?
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that because we, we haven't even had our first kind of organizational meeting on that. Be happy to bring a schedule back after we do.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, I'm happy to make a motion, unless there's other questions.
Any other questions? Please, make a motion.
All right, um, I move that Resolution Number 2021-08033R, Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement for Project and Fiscal Management of American Rescue Fund Plan Act for the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, be moved to city council with a recommendation for approval.
And would you want it on consent?
Sure.
Second.
We'll put it on consent.
Thank you, Sharice, for your second. Any further discussion? Seeing none and seeing that this is a resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, the next item is Ordinance Number 2021-08036, an ordinance approving special use permit for 206 and 208 East California Avenue, Plan Case 2427-SG-U-21 Cunningham Township. Don't think the mic is on yet.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Great. This is a request by the Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office for a special use permit to allow a home for adjustment and office at 206 and 208 East California Avenue. Home for adjustment is an outdated term, so I will refer to it, or to the use as emergency housing, which is how it's defined in the zoning ordinance. Staff received one letter of public input in opposition to the special use permit, and it was included in your packet. At the August 5th, 2021 meeting, the Plan Commission voted with four As and zero Ns to forward the case to the Committee of the Whole with a recommendation for approval, and staff concurs. This is a location map of the property. They're located on the north side of California Avenue, west of Vine Street. The township purchased the properties earlier this year. There are two apartment buildings on the property now, and the township plans to use the eight existing apartments as part of their housing assistance program, including emergency housing for families and residents with disabilities. The emergency housing program currently operates out of a hotel where families stay in single-room units, which only have one microwave for cooking. At the end of the month, the hotel will no longer be an option for the program. Without the special use permit, the township states that they would no longer be able to operate the program. This is a zoning map of the properties. They're zoned R4, medium-density, multiple-family residential, and the use is allowed in the district with a special use permit. Nearby are professional services and retail businesses to the north and east, and small apartment buildings and residences to the south and west. The adjacent properties are zoned R4, B3, general business, and B4, central business. This is a future land use map of the properties. The proposed use for the site are to provide emergency housing for families and people with disabilities, and a small office space for material storage and use by case managers. Families are referred to the program through the Urbana School District and Crisis Nursery, and they are then carefully screened and moved into furnished housing. A case manager makes phone contact with the participants three to four times per week, and visits the home once or twice a week. The program can also provide food to residents and childcare to heads of households, so they can find work and stable housing. The following slides will be a few photos of the apartment buildings. The township intends to use an average of five units for emergency housing, but would like to use, or would like to have flexibility to use all eight units if the need arises. The office would be incidental to the emergency housing use. However, professional businesses and offices also require a special use permit in the R4 zoning district, so that is part of this request. The housing and office would use the existing layout of the apartment buildings with some interior renovations, including new flooring and installing washers and dryers in some of the units. The buildings are currently classified as apartments on their certificates of occupancy, which allows for long-term residential use of more than 30 days. To allow for stays of 30 days or less, the apartment buildings would need to be reclassified as transient housing and would require new certificates of occupancy. Also, to put an office space in one of the existing buildings, a new certificate of occupancy would be required. If the buildings are to be used for transient housing or office uses, the township will be required to have a code analysis done on the buildings to ensure that they meet the building code requirements for those uses. On July 29th, the township hosted a neighborhood meeting at the Urbana Free Library. Thirty-five people attended, including eight township staff members, three city staff, two city council members, and several members of the public. The township explained the emergency housing program and the reasons for the special use permit request. They also answered questions about the program and how it will operate at this location. One more photo. To summarize, staff has found that the request meets the three criteria for a special use permit. The proposed use would be conducive to the public convenience as it aligns with the residential neighbor, nature of the area. The site is close to schools, public transportation, grocery stores, and recreational areas, which is convenient for families and children in need of housing. The proposed use would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district as it would occupy the two existing apartment buildings that are on-site now. Families are referred to the program by the Urbana School District and Crisis Nursery, and then they're carefully screened and moved into furnished housing. Case managers work with the families, visit the homes, and help to provide food and childcare. The existing apartment buildings already conform to the standards and preserve the essential character of the R4 zoning district. The use is simply a change from apartment housing to emergency housing. The use will continue to be residential and meets the intent of the zoning district. The Committee of the Whole has the following options on the requested special use permit: to allow Cunningham Township to operate a home for adjustment and office at this location, forward the ordinance to City Council with a recommendation of approval, or to reject Cunningham Township's request and not allow them to operate a home for adjustment and office at this location, forward the ordinance to City Council with a recommendation of denial. At the August 5th, 2021 meeting, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward the special use permit request to City Council with a recommendation of approval with two conditions. The first being, prior to the city issuing new certificates of occupancy to allow uses classified by the building code as R1 or B, the applicant must first have a licensed architect conduct a code analysis and make sure any necessary building modifications to bring the units up to code are made. And the second being, prior to the city issuing new certificates of occupancy, residents are required to live in the buildings for at least 30 days. I can take any questions for staff, and I believe the applicant is present as well.
All right. Do we have any questions? Mary Alice?
So, when we were going through this process, there was a limited lease that was developed, and in that limited lease, there was a list of kind of rules and expectations. I'm wondering if those are going to be the same rules and expectations for any residents in this, under this emergency housing? And if you don't know the answer, I can certainly ask Danielle.
I think Danielle would be the best one to answer that question, and we've talked about it a bit, but she might be able to expand on that a little bit more.
Okay, I think, I mean, it might address, I read the letter of the gentleman who owns the business right next door, it might address some of those concerns, if the public were aware that there are certain rules and guidelines, that people who are going to be living here for less than 30 days. And, yeah, I'll save my comments for discussion. Thank you.
Other questions? I, oh, go ahead, Grace. I was just going to ask a question. For the emergency housing use, does it have to go through the same rental inspection that any other property would have to go if it was rented in the city?
So, these are not rental units, as in, there will not be leases for these specific units, so they will not be registered through the rental registration program. That said, for the time being, I think for the next year, the year on the lease, for the two residents choosing to stay in the building, those units will need to be registered as rentals through the rental registration program.
Okay, let me, let me ask my question another way. If there are code issues or problems with the property that would need to be addressed before anybody starts occupying it as emergency housing, how would the city go about enforcing those code updates or changes?
So, as the buildings will continue to be used as apartment buildings, as long as residents are staying for 30 days or longer, there's no change in the certificate of occupancy, so there's no requirement of inspection by building safety to go in and make sure that everything is at code. I think Danielle has been making efforts to bring the units up in terms of safety for the childrens and families living in them, or that will be living in them. However, there is not a requirement, without a change in the certificate of occupancy, for the city to go in and do an inspection.
So, for questions like egress based on occupancy and fire hazard, is that something that the Fire Department would look at, or?
Um, that's, yeah, that's a good question. I'll defer to Lori on that.
Thank you, Lori.
So, certainly, we can look at issues that are identified. So, for instance, earlier we heard about a railing that was, that needs to be fixed. Those kinds of things we can require. Can we require, if there's no change in use, to upgrade an electrical system? No, we cannot require that. So that's where the change, that's where the difference is, so that if there's something that's broken, that's there, that needs to be fixed, we can go in and ask that to be fixed. But because if you're going from an apartment building to an apartment building, you don't need to bring up everything up to code.
Yeah, because I was particularly concerned about the play area and the, how busy that place is on Saturday. That's a really good, good point, and if there's not something that's going to drive those changes, then I, I'm guessing the town board may have to talk about it when we're the town board.
There's also an opportunity, since this is a special use permit, that you can place additional conditions on something, on a, on a case like this, should you want to do that. So, a special use permit, by its nature, requires approval by City Council because it could potentially have additional impacts. So you can then place conditions on something like this in order to mitigate those impacts. So just because we don't require something to do X, Y, and Z, doesn't mean that you can't require something to do X, Y, and Z.
All right, thank you. Other, other questions? Sharice?
So, we actually could, I think, one of the things that also caught my attention was whether or not it was ADA, up to ADA standards. And, I'm sorry, I have her name here.
Marilyn.
Marilyn.
Yeah. And she had mentioned that she has to step up four inches to get into her apartment. So, for it to be up to ADA standards, even, I mean, a minimal thing would be just to put a type of ramp placement there. We could actually require something like that before occupancy.
So, building code, usually, if something is built new and they need to meet today's codes, then they need to do, a certain percentage of units need to be accessible or adaptable or that kind of thing. Usually, retrofitting that kind of, that kind of thing could be really expensive. I'm not sure if, if the township has had any architects look at those sorts of details. Just want you to be cognizant that if you add a lot of conditions like that, it may end up being a project that isn't affordable any longer, but the township can respond to that.
Well, she was saying that she lives on a first floor and she has to step up four...
If you look on the picture, there's actually two four-foot steps that go into the apartment on that bottom floor, and those are the two bedroom apartments. The smaller building has just one bedroom. So, any family with a, like, a mother and has a wheelchair or disability is not going to be able to get in that, those apartments.
And so it would just be two apartments, then, that would need that type of retrofitting, is what I'm thinking.
Two bedrooms.
Yeah.
It's two of them. You go back to the picture.
Yeah, but that's just for the, that's for them to go upstairs. I'm saying for the bottom floor, when it's the, I don't, I'm just asking if that was something that we could...
Sure, I was just suggesting that putting an elevator in or something like that might be cost prohibitive.
No, 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 I'm not thinking about an elevator, but I am thinking in terms of, people that would be on the first floor, and that that could possibly be an issue. And I know that several, you know, churches and stuff like that have ramps that go up, of course, but I'm not even thinking of, like, you know, the, the little mice maze rant.
Well, accessibility, keep in mind, is also within the unit. So if you advertise a unit that is accessible, you need to be looking at the bathrooms, turning radius, all of that.
Right.
So more than just, so getting into a unit perhaps could be considered visitable, because you can go visit there, but you might not be able to do anything, you might not be able to live there comfortably.
Right. So what, all I'm saying, though, is that for at least one of those units, because you have the other unit on the ground floor, for one of those units, though, at the, they're not going to be there for more than 30 days, which I would think would be visitable, considered, considering, and so, but you still want to be able to get in the place, at the very least. That's all I'm saying. It's just certain things that we may want to consider, I don't know. So, Mary Alice was, you know, talking about that, how, how, not Mary Alice, but James was talking about how the egress and everything else, and we kind of, those are things that I think we need to consider as far as, since we are the town board as well, that we need to consider when, considering how, the model we want to set.
Well, the, the condition, as it's stated right now, would require a code analysis, which would identify those exact things, only in the instance where they would have people staying there for fewer than 30 days.
Okay.
So you could potentially tweak that condition to just require a code analysis, and then deciding which of those items, though, would need to be fixed, would be a, would be a difficult, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you write that in a condition, if you don't know what the code analysis might say you need to fix, what you would make them fix. So, I'll think about that.
Okay.
Okay, Mary Alice?
Lori, since you're here, and I think James made a really good point about the rental registration. You know, one of the things that Esther Pat said in her email to us was that this is really a very similar use, and that, you know, they're, they're going to be used as apartments. The reason we're going through this is because some of those people will be there for less than 30 days. So my question is, I think that it is, building codes change, some things are safety-related, and I think it would behoove us to treat this as if it was part of the rental registration? My question is, if the, if the City Council agrees with that, would the best way to do that be to add in something here, or would the best way to do that to change the rental registration to include this type of housing?
I think it, well, it would be simplest, of course, just to add it to this. What I would do between now and either the end of this discussion, or particularly, or next week for sure, is confirm that there aren't conflicts. So if there's a conflict in the rental registration ordinance, then just adding it here wouldn't work. But if it, if it's silent to it, then I don't see why you wouldn't be able to just require it here.
All right, Grace.
My question that you've already got in here was just, you know, addressing the safety standards, and it seems like the, being brought up to code will be, you know, the most thorough thing to do, so that definitely makes sense. And not speak for people, but for a member from our previous conversations, we, like you mentioned, you know, we were shown the rules for residents in the emergency housing, and there was talk at doing ADA accessibility, I believe, and doing retrofitting the bathrooms, and I think, my understanding is that it will kind of depend on what interiors get done, to make some handicap accessible, I think probably not all, but maybe some. Yeah, can we still take input, or do we have a township representative here?
We do have an applicant representative here.
Yes. Yes, I'm, this is Danielle Chanelworth, I'm also available on phone. And I do believe that at some point, the petitioner gets a chance to make a statement, so just let me know, James, when that time is.
This sounds like about the best time possible. Go ahead.
Okay. So, good evening. My name is Danielle Chanelworth, I'm the Cunningham Township Supervisor, selected position that's contiguous with the City of Urbana. Our focus is on serving low-income households in our community. I have a prepared statement, and I want to get a chance to answer some of the questions, and I'm certainly open to answering other questions. Jasmine, her name, that is our program director, is also in the audience, and she can speak to specifics of how we operate the program. So, first off, we have... So first off, we have the opportunity in Urbana to end homelessness, starting with our children. It is a totally doable thing that we can do in our community. It is a finite number of folks. And we are a small enough community and we have a strong township, city, county, and governmental system to do this. So that's the first piece. We, when I first came to township in May of 2017, I, we only had the tool of general assistance. But most of the phone calls that we received were for rental assistance and homelessness. I had a woman who showed up at our doorstep who was sleeping in her car and had been sleeping in her car for nine months. Her legs were like two balloons. She was going to die of congestive heart failure. She had been sleeping in a cul-de-sac in Urbana. She had worked her entire life. And she had lost her home when her mother had passed away. And I really dedicate a lot of the work that we've done to her and the many people, including the gentleman who spoke earlier, who have been served by our program. So I want to be clear that as we talk about technical details, we are talking about the alternative of not having a shelter is people sleeping in their cars. And they're doing that right now. And they continue to do that, especially since our shelter for single women and men has been closed all summer. So if you want to talk about public health risks, let's talk about the real situation, which is that we have folks in dire need of services. We have folks who have, this program will essentially focus on women and parents with children and residents with disabilities who cannot be accommodated at you at home. And actually, more often, the disability that we see is that somebody is, has a CPAP machine or medical equipment or medical fragility, although we have served folks in wheelchairs. And I'll get to that piece in a second about the accessibility. We went to the community and we asked them to restore our tax levy plus some so that we could achieve our goal of ending homelessness in Urbana. And sixty-two percent of voters last November said, yes, we want to do this. So during COVID, we started a program in a hotel which must shut down at the end of this month. It will not be tenable after that time. And we knew that as the community opened up after COVID, we would be in a position where we had to purchase our own home to remain sustainable in that program. Ninety-seven percent of our families have exited to more stable housing. And our housing advocacy program, forty-one percent of those who we have served have gotten into permanent housing, many of whom were homeless before. So we're talking about in our first year, literally hundreds of Urbana residents being housed who are homeless, just in our first year alone. So what we're asking for, and we've been discussing this since April, the city is aware, the town board is aware, and the city council is aware. Our story has not changed. The situation has not stayed changed. We had a neighborhood meeting. We gathered input. We went to the plan commission. They voted unanimously. And we're asking you, and I'll ask Jasmine to speak a little bit about the program kind of criteria. But essentially, what we're asking you is to approve the plan commission's recommendation, which does require code analysis if we have a change of use. And we are intending to have, our stays are going to be longer than thirty days, so it's not going to be transient housing. In fact, our average stay without transfers is sixty days. But we are going to ask for an office at this location so that we can provide more robust services on location. We have already secured an architect and we are going through that code analysis process because time is of the essence. And we would like to open on the twenty-fourth. So I would encourage you, when looking at adding additional constraints, I would ask you to please take that into the town board process rather than the special use process, if at all possible, because any additional constraint is going to slow down the process and we'll have to close the program for a temporary period of time. And I would prefer not to have that situation happen. So in response to a couple of the questions, lease provisions, no one signs the lease that the town board approved. And so there is no one who is under those lease provisions. That said, I can ask Jasmine to speak about the program criteria. The second question was code issues, and I spoke to that. We have an architect who's doing a code analysis. We are definitely replacing the railing. It basically has some issues because it's loose. And I don't think that the gaps are appropriate. So we're looking at safer railings on both top and bottom. Accessibility, as we have stated upfront, our intention is to make one unit and our budget, our town board budget, which was approved by the town board, is to make one unit accessible. That unit would be unit number four. It is not the unit with four inches of steps. It is a unit that is already rolling capable. It already has a sink that is accessible. And it will be minimal retooling for us to make that unit accessible. If we fundraise on top of our budget for an additional unit to be accessible, we will do so. But at this point, we're planning on one accessible unit because that's all we've ever needed. We don't see the need for additional accessibility. In terms of, let's see. Let's see. I think just the last piece is, I will ask Jasmine if she could speak a little bit about the program description. We have a very robust program that has proven itself in the last year to be successful. We have worked with a number of families who have been so grateful for our ability to work together to move to higher ground. And those families are now in permanent and oftentimes subsidized housing as a result of our work together. And frankly, the families do most of the work. Our case managers certainly are there to support them. But these are women who are extremely motivated to care for their children and to help get to higher ground. They are oftentimes victims of violence that was past violence that made it difficult for them to maintain stability in their lives. And so we would like to move forward in partnership with the school district, the City of Urbana, and with our area partners to launch this program on the twenty-fourth after your approval. And with that, I'd just ask if Jasmine, if you could add anything you wanted to about the program.
Yes. Good evening, all. Can you hear me fine? So yeah, just to add a little bit tidbit to the actual process side of case management. So our participants are coming to us with a referral from the Urbana School District or Crisis Nursery, for which we both have agreements with to this point. And that's helping us with the verification of residency since our tax, or our funding is, you know, Urbana taxpayer money. And once we receive those referrals, the families are screened very carefully, including for any issues of actively fleeing domestic violence or attempting to, so that we're making the appropriate connections when our program is not the most appropriate for them. But once they enter into our program, it's a very intense program for them. You know, they're coming in and they're hitting the ground running. They're putting in applications for rental applications. They're putting, you know, childcare applications, employment applications in. The main focus is housing, but we're offering that wraparound support as well to get everything else stabilized, all of their other needs met in order for them, once they receive that housing, once they're in housing. And it is like Danielle said, most of the time, it is long-term subsidized housing. So this is not a program that is setting anybody up for failure. We are giving them all of the tools necessary, even when there is a need that the Cunningham Township cannot meet. We are making sure that we're connecting them with the appropriate resources so that they know who to turn to in the end. We also, when they move into subsidized housing, there's a couple of follow-up programs, including a housewarming program because moving into an apartment, especially an unfurnished one, is very expensive. So we help with the cost of that. They get a stipend to either use that Habitat for Humanity or at Salt and Light. We're also working with RPC with bed referrals through their program. We are working with, we have a case manager that works with broadband, so we're working on connectivity with them. So we're really addressing in a very short timeframe, major needs. And we are setting them up for success here. And these are starting with our little children, which there is no other option for them aside from Crisis Nursery. But they are only allowed to stay there if they're six and under. So there is a huge gap in the community. And if we don't address this, we're setting people up for a lifetime of trauma. And that's so much harder to address down the line. Thanks.
All right. Any further questions? All right. I would ask that someone make a motion.
I'll do it. I have moved to approve.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I moved to approve, or no, moved to send to council with recommendation for approval on the consent agenda. Ordinance number 2021-08-036, an ordinance approving a special use permit, 206, 208 East California Avenue, Plan Case 2427 SU21 Cunningham Township.
I'll second.
Second by Jill. Discussion, Mary Alice.
So first, I know this is a long time coming. Thank you, everybody, for working so hard at this and all the process. I don't have any concerns that this isn't going to pass tonight. I would like to talk about two things. The first one is, is that I don't have any desire to hold up the process of making this into emergency housing. I do think that there is a potential risk for children going into that parking lot behind the building. Because that is usually tied to the market in the square, I would like to propose requesting that there be a fence there at the back of the property by May first of 2022. That would be the start of the next market season. So that's one idea I had. The other idea is, is that if we add, well, Lori's just showing me the ordinance for the rental registration thing. So I would like to get that figured out. That would not delay anything because they're getting a building code analysis right now. It would just add it to kind of the list of properties to go through and make sure that we're still having, we're still doing health and safety in these properties. So those are my two things that I wanted to add to the conversation.
Other discussion? No other discussion? Mary Alice, would you take the chair for a moment?
Sure. I will take the chair. And the chair recognizes James.
Yeah, I am in total support of this program going forward, but I agree with the suggestions that Mary Alice makes. At no point should we put people's safety at risk to move this program forward. If there are things that need to be addressed, we need to address those. That doesn't say anything against the program or its goals or its value. That just says we have an obligation, a responsibility, to make sure this is done. And you can tell me as many stories as you want to about the urgency. The urgency is there, but we can't let the urgency prevent us from doing what's right with regard to public safety and making sure these units serve that program without creating any undue risk. So thank you. I will take the chair back now.
All right. You can have the chair.
Chair Quisenberry, this is Danielle. Can I respond to the two proposals?
Yeah, I guess you can. We're actually past the point of that kind of discussion. I think we could, we could.
Oh, I just thought I'd be curious to hear the response, input on that.
All right. Go ahead, Danielle.
Yeah. Well, first, it might help to clarify, our impression was that because we have two rentals at this location, that essentially rental registration applies to us. And we've been using the rental registration checklist from the City of Urbana to do our upgrades and our testing. So I have no concerns at all with the rental registration piece. I just want to clarify, it actually was my understanding that this would be under the rental registration program. In terms of the fence, I just want to offer that there are like, there's some safety, I agree with the safety concern around parking. And I think that giving us some reasonable time to address the safety concern is totally appropriate. I do want our architect to maybe make some recommendations because if we could make kind of a safe play space on location, I would love to be able to do that and to consider that with the town board. So if your recommendation could maybe allow for some flexibility so that we could come back to the, to the town, I could come back to the town board with a design and schematic to do something. That's all, like, can we address safety of children going into the parking lot with some kind of barrier? I'm not sure what the language would be, but some way of addressing that, then might also look at some of the desire to have some onsite play space for the kids.
So are you okay with it being less specific, but with that same May first timeline?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. I just want to say I'm fine with that. I think our main concern was delay at this point because we are feeling like we're not taking folks into the hotel right now. We're feeling very pinched with time. And we're doing all the upgrades as we had kind of planned and intended and budgeted with the town board. So that was my only request, is that we can stay on timeline. We're happy to accommodate other things. And then if your recommendations could provide flexibility so that we could have dialogue over this timeframe, that's all. That's the only request.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. So given that, Mary Alice, it looks like you're comfortable with adjusting your recommendations. How do we, since we have a motion on the floor in a second, how do we get this adjusted in time for us to pass it next week?
Can I, usually we suggest to staff to address those two items for the city council for the next meeting.
And then bring it in, yeah. And then put it in a new packet.
And we don't have to change the motion for that?
I would change it, though, to take it off the consent agenda.
I don't think we put it on the consent agenda.
I did. That was my motion. It was for a recommendation on the consent agenda.
Okay, so would you?
I would change that to take it off the consent agenda.
And Jill, were you the second?
And just move it to city council without approval so that we can update that part next week.
So not on consent, not without recommendation?
No recommendation, yeah. With no recommendation.
No recommendation.
Not on the consent agenda, but move to council.
Okay. And because, I think I got it. Because this is an ordinance, we will need a roll call vote for ordinance number 2021-08-036, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 206 and 208 East California Avenue, Plan Case 2427 SU21 Cunningham Township, to be forwarded to city council without a recommendation. So could we have a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That passes. I'm going to entertain a motion for a five-minute recess?
That's just what I was going to do.
I'll move that we recess for five minutes. Second.
Grace seconds. Mary Alice moves that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are recessed for five minutes. All right. I'm going to call us back to order. We did have a person who wanted to give public input that wanted to wait for item number thirteen, but they have to leave. I wanted to check with the council to see if everyone is okay with letting them speak now before the budget item. Is everybody okay with that? No concerns? By consensus, Ms. Sarah Nixon? Please come on up. And you're speaking to item number thirteen in advance.
I think it's on now.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Sarah Nixon and I live and work in Urbana and Champaign. City Council, first, why are we here in person when we could be participating remotely? Secondly, how is it in the interest of the public to neuter the council's input and thus the constituency's input in the issue of appointments and reappointments of critical public servants? For example, the city's police leadership. For context, or some context, last spring and summer, an outcry arose from the people of Urbana calling for the immediate resignation of the chief of police. That was following the incident where an innocent young African-American woman was beaten in the street by the UPD, which in turn was followed by an appalling performance of lack of accountability, total lack of accountability, cover-up, PR spin, launched by city leadership. total lack of accountability, cover-up, PR spin, launched by city leadership, and with taxpayers, of course, fitting the bill, footing the bill for the fiasco. At that time, Mayor Marlin called for cool heads to prevail, called for calm, appealed to the public to give the chief a chance to prove himself capable of transforming the culture of what we perceive to be misconduct and cover-up, particularly when it comes to racial bias, although the problems run deep at the UPD and that he was committed to doing so. The mayor assured the people and the council repeatedly and with a great display of sincerity that, quote, "The chief of police is an annual appointment, not a permanent position", that there would always be ample opportunity to revisit and reevaluate performance, the performance of police leadership. Apparently, that was a bait-and-switch tactic. That's how it appears now, as the mayor has instead neutered the city council and wants you to vote this evening, a yes vote, to completely eliminating your and our input as provided for and protected by a city code. This proposal serves the personal interests of the mayor's appointees, but not the people whom they serve. No intelligent and reasonable person buys the story that removing the council and the public's input on performance, on the performance review process and reappointment process serves their interest, nor the narrative that it is otherwise difficult or impossible to fill these key leadership positions. Urbana receives tons of applications for public service positions. For example, the community engagement coordinator opening received more than 100 applications. So the city does not have a problem with supply with good and ready and willing applicants. What we have a problem with is the integrity of the individuals who are handpicked by this administration. I also would like to add, as my comment was two-pronged with regard to agenda item number six, on the public engagement dimension of where the ARP funding is critically needed, I would like to have a conversation with all of you about healthy and happy and safe families, children, parents, and justice, a proposal for a family justice center for Urbana-Champaign. I request that you please reach out to me. I have worked diligently for over a year in my own time with the Family Justice Center Alliance, they're based in California, on a proposal for a one-stop wraparound services, Family Justice System Center, Family Justice Center here in Champaign-Urbana. Our current model is not working. It's fractured. It's malfunctioning. And victims are falling through the cracks. I know this from listening to others and from my own family's experience. The Family Justice Center Alliance, based in California, mentors cities all over America in setting up family justice centers. A couple of years ago, Rockford, Illinois became the first in Illinois to establish such a center. Again, I am asking, please engage with me and with others who can speak to the critical need and urgent need for significant funding for a Champaign-Urbana Family Justice Center. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we will move on to our next agenda item, which is ordinance number 2021-08-037, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2022 annual budget.
So this is our second budget amendment this fiscal year, a little sooner than we expected. But there was one particularly time-sensitive item on here, which is the first item described on the memo, the campus lighting project. This is basically a timing issue. The original budget for this project was 1.3 million. That was budgeted in FY '20 and '21. The second part of the project, the Matthews Avenue portion, is actually not going to be completed until FY '22, the current year. And we are, I believe, ready to award that bid. The total project will actually come in at 1.1 million. So we need to amend the budget to be able to award that bid to complete the project. In the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, we would accelerate replacement of some mobile radios for the police department. This is a year that all of their squad cars will be replaced. There's a significant redesign of the standard squad car that Ford is providing. And so it made sense at this point to also replace the radios at this time. In community development, we have two grants, which you're also going to talk about in just a minute here, but we'll make changes related to the Emergency Solutions Grant, the traditional ESG, and also the portion related to the CARES Act. And so we will amend the Grants Fund to show revenue and expenditure for both of those grants. And then also a portion of that will go to the Community Development Special Fund for admin costs related to the grants. And then finally, in the Information Technology Fund, in this year's budget, we have a computer technician apprentice, which is part of a program through Parkland College. And when we finalize the budget, we mistakenly put that entire amount into salaries, when actually part of that is to help pay tuition for the apprentice that will be working with us. Because the city code does not allow us to move money between personnel expenses and other types of expenses, this has to come to council to make that change. So that's it, just a few items to change on the budget.
And this requires a supermajority, correct?
Correct, requires a supermajority.
And if I could ask a question, because I'm new to city government, I understand why the council would need a supermajority to actually enact it. Why is, why does the committee of the whole require a supermajority to pass it to council?
I don't, I don't think you actually do. The city clerk might correct me if I'm wrong. But you can move it to council with a majority, but the actual vote will require a supermajority.
So the supermajority only applies to the council vote?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That helps me understand. Any other questions? Yes, Chris?
How much are the radios going to cost and how much are the squad cars going to cost?
I don't have the figures for the squad cars with me, but I can email that to you. The radios will be, sorry, fogging issues with the glasses and the mask. The radios will be $62,864.
Grace?
Okay. Yeah, because I was looking in that, so the 3.4 million is the whole vehicle or the whole equipment replacement item for that one? Is that correct? I'm confused why it's the?
Correct. So you're looking at the exhibit, right?
Yes, so the expenditures, I'm sorry, 1.06 or 1.2 million. And that difference of 62,000 is the radios?
Correct. When you look at the total, the total expenditures in the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund will be 1.127 after this amendment. And the ending fund balance would be 3.431, rounded.
Okay, but the 62,000 is the only cost for the radios in particular, you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
And is that being pulled from a 2024 budget? Like, was it allocated in their expected end of life?
Right. In our original plan, we thought that would happen in 2024, but it needs to happen now. And so we'll move it forward and then it'll be another, I can't remember what the life cycle is, but it'll be another eight years before we look at replacing them again.
And I had some other questions, too. I was wondering about the campus lighting project. Anyone knows what campus are we talking about? Like, U of I campus?
Right, yes, the U of I campus.
And surrounding parts into Urbana? I mean, I imagine not on campus, correct?
Right, so camp, I would describe it as campus area, but this actual part that's addressed by the budget amendment is on Matthews Avenue, which is in Urbana Street.
Okay, and I had a question about the Emergency Solutions Grant that I was going to wait until we talked about that, but it's on here now. So, no, should I ask now? I don't know. It's kind of weird to have this budget amendment to, like, approve the budget amendment and then accept the grants afterwards in the meeting, if you know what I mean? Okay, I'll ask it. I was wondering why the administrative fee was much higher on the Emergency Solutions COVID CARES Act Grant 1?
Let me ask Jill if she'll come up and help us with that one.
All right, I can hold off till then, but it is just kind of weird to have the budget amendment and then accept the grant.
The state of Illinois allocates how much we can spend for administrative costs for each one of those. So the traditional grant is, I think, around 36,000. And they've allowed us to, they added on additional $990 for administrative cost. And then same with the CARES funding.
Oh, and that's just set by state? Because it is much higher. That one was about 9% of the grant amount versus 2% or 3% on the other one, or what we were paying RPC, or what seems to be like, kind of more of what the other ones are?
Yep, yep, the state sets that amount. And if they say that's the maximum we can ask, that's what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Mary Alice?
I don't have a question, but I'm happy to make a motion.
I didn't see any other hands go up, so yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I will say this is the first time I have not asked Elizabeth for details on a budget amendment. So with that in mind, I will move forward ordinance number 2021-08-037, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2022 annual budget to city council on the consent agenda.
Second.
It can't be on consent.
We can't do it, can we? Because it has to be a supermajority. All right, with recommendation for approval.
All right.
Second.
I have a second from Sharice. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, and because this is an ordinance, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wu, Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Elizabeth. All right, before we go on to the next item, there's been a request that we consider, since these four resolutions are related, there's been a request if we could consider them as an omnibus motion. That would require for one of us, not me, to make a motion to treat this as an omnibus collection and then, and a second, and then we'd have to vote to approve that. But then we could pass or fail the whole batch at the same time. Would someone be willing to make that motion? Between the two people looking at each other?
I can make that motion. Do you want me to read all of them that we're going to be putting in?
I think to make it appropriate, you have to do that, yes.
All right, well, I move in an omnibus, that we merge, I'm going to say merge, one, two, three, four of these, and I'm going to read each one. So Resolution Number 2021-08-034R, Resolution Approving the Emergency Solutions Grant, otherwise known as ESG Agreement with the Illinois Department of Human Services. The second resolution, Number 2021-08-035R, Resolution Approving the ESG Subrecipient Agreement with Cunningham Township. The third resolution, Resolution Number 2021-08-036R, Resolution Approving the Emergency Solutions Grant Under CARES Act, ESG CV2, the agreement with Illinois Department of Human Services. And the fourth one, fourth resolution, Resolution Number 2021-08-037R, Resolution Approving the ESG CV2 Subrecipient Agreement with Cunningham Township.
Very good. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sharice. Okay, so let's hear about all of these together.
Do we need to vote on moving it as an omnibus?
Oh, yes, that's, that's true. Thank you. So any discussion on, on the question of omnibus-ing these resolutions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, we now have an omnibus motion.
Good evening. So before you are the, are two sets of resolutions that are relating to the Emergency Solutions Grant and the Emergency Solutions Grant under the CARES Act, which is also known as ESG CV2. So the first set of resolutions are approving the ESG and ESG CV agreements with the Illinois Department of Human Services. And in the second set are two resolutions approving ESG and ESG CV subrecipient agreements with Cunningham Township. Just to give a broad overview of the program, the ESG and ESG CV programs provide funding for emergency shelter, homelessness prevention activities, short and medium-term rental assistance, and services to rapidly rehouse individuals experiencing homelessness. In the spring of 2021, the Champaign County Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless recommended Cunningham Township's Bridge-to-Home Rapid Rehousing Program for funding through the ESG and ESG CV programs. The Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless selected the City of Urbana to be the financial sponsor on behalf of Cunningham Township. Now, the reason for this is that agencies that have never been awarded ESG funds must receive the funds through a subrecipient agreement. And since the city had received the funds previously, it was determined to be an appropriate financial sponsor. Back in the spring, city staff applied to IDHS for these funds on behalf of Cunningham Township and in July received notice that the applications had been approved. The ESG, the traditional ESG award is $37,681, of which Cunningham Township will receive $36,690.15 to administer their rapid rehousing program. This will include relocation and stabilization services, along with tenant-based rental assistance. Of this funding, the city will receive $990.85 for administrative costs. The ESG CV award is $131,240, of which Cunningham Township will receive $119,317.50 to administer their program. The city will receive $11,922.50 for administrative costs. Both subrecipient agreements are not to exceed two years, and there will be no impact on the city's general fund as the funding comes from IDHS. So the decisions before the council are to allow the ESG and ESG CV2 funds to be distributed to Cunningham Township and forward the resolution to city council with a recommendation for approval as part of the consent agenda, or to reject the recommendations of the Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless and not distribute the funds to Cunningham Township and not forward the resolution to accept the ESG and ESG CV funds. The Community Development Commission and city staff recommend forwarding the resolutions to city council with a recommendation for approval as part of the consent agenda. Thank you. And I'll take questions.
Do we have any questions? Mary Alice?
Oh, thank you very much. I think, is this the first time you've come to city council?
It is, yeah.
Welcome. I saw you at the, at the Community Development Board, yes. So my, my only question with this is that one of these requires matching funds and one does not.
Correct.
Right, so the state one, I believe, it's not the CARES Act, it's the state one that requires the matching funds.
That's, that's correct. The traditional ESG program does require a match, but the CARES Act notice says that there's no match requirement.
And so based on this, that those matching funds would be coming from Cunningham Township and not city, the city?
That's correct.
So I was, I was trying to think of eligible sources, and 25% has to come from cash. One of the programs I know that they do at Township is they do trying to prevent eviction based on, you know, one, two, or three months of back rent. Would that be something that would qualify here as matching funds? Since it's a very similar item?
I could look into that for you. I'm not quite sure. You know, they do need to verify every time they submit a pay request to the city for these funds. They have to, you know, verify what the match is as well. Whether or not that would qualify, I'm not quite sure at this time, but I could look into that for you.
Okay, so that every time that they submit a request, they also have to have the matching to that?
That's correct.
So if it's, they're asking for $200 and they have to come up with 100? Or is it 200 and 400, so?
It has to be an equal match.
Yeah, an equal match. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was confused about the attachments. I don't know.
Thank you. Um, I was confused about the attachments. I don't know if I was missing something?
Uh, the attachments can be provided to you. Um, it's the statute, the Emergency Solutions Grant statute, um, that is provided to Cunningham Township, which outlines, uh, the federal code of, um, regulation for, for the grant program.
And same with, oh, okay, so B is the State of Illinois Required Certifications, and then A is this part about the transition housing?
Yeah, again, that's the federal regulation, and we can provide those to you. They're fairly lengthy documents.
Okay, so those will be in the agreement? Just, they just weren't provided all in the packet?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to, um, pass this, this collection on to, uh, City Council.
With a recommendation? On the consent agenda?
Yes.
Can we put that on the consent?
If, if so, the, the motion, the person making the motion can make that choice. And so, I don't think you have to read everything again, because we've already put the omnibus together. This would just be a motion for the, that collection to be passed on to City Council like we normally do.
I'll, I'll move to pass this collection in omnibus fashion to the consent agenda.
With recommendation.
With a recommendation for approval.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Grace. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? That passes unanimously. And that brings us, thank you. Uh, that brings us to our last item on the agenda, I believe, uh, number thirteen. Um, well, it's not the last thing on our agenda, but it's the last ordinance. Um, ordinance number twenty twenty-one oh eight oh thirty-eight, an ordinance amending City Code Chapter Two, Administration, Sections two forty-two, Appointment two forty-three, Term two seventy, Appointment two ninety-nine, Civil Service System, Chapter Five, Building Fire and Flood Safety Codes, Section five dash twelve, Appointment, and Chapter twenty-five, Vegetation, Section twenty-five dash forty-eight, Appointment, and we're gonna have a presentation on this.
That's a mouthful. Um, so, so we are expecting to have a few questions about this item tonight, and so I have with me Michelle Brooks, who is our Labor and Employee Relations Manager, and Liz Borman, who is our HR Manager. So, the ordinance before you would amend specific sections of the City Code related to staff appointments and to the civil service system. So, first a little background. The Illinois Municipal Code addresses appointments, and it speaks to what positions that can be appointed, as well as some that must be appointed. It also limits terms of staff appointments to the term of a mayor. So, we also, in researching this, looked at appointment practices at other cities in Illinois, and as you see on the second page of the memo, we, we provided a chart for comparable communi- communities in Illinois, and these are generally communities that are close in population to Urbana, or that are, that, that are in proximity, that, that are kind of competing in the same labor market. Um, if you, if you look at that chart, Urbana appears to be an outlier. Um, virtually all of the, well, all of the alder manic communities on this list have far fewer appoint, staff appointees than we have. And in the council manager communities, generally only the manager is appointed by council, and then the manager appoints other staff, although there are a couple of exceptions there. So, none of these communities appoint any staff below the level of a deputy department head. So, in Urbana, we also have a civil service system. So, civil, civil service systems were created based on the principle that government hiring should be based on merit rather than political patronage. So, this is a holdover from the days of political bosses, ba- basically. In my hometown, in Cincinnati, that was boss Cox. Um, so, all employees in Urbana who are not appointed are part of the civil service system, and that system gives them certain rights and imposes accountability through a disciplinary process. Civil service systems appear to be relatively uncommon in Illinois, perhaps because other communities have elected to ac- accomplish those same objectives through another process. So, in terms of Urbana and our history, this took quite a, quite a bit of digging, but, um, going back to nineteen ninety-four, the number of appointments in ninety-four was twenty-one, and then it was up to thirty in twenty thirteen. That's been reduced in recent years, until we were at twenty-one appointed positions this year, twenty twenty-one. Police lieutenants in particular were not appointed before twenty-eleven, they were in civil service, and even then, when they moved into the appointment process, some of them were still grandfathered into civil service. So, we had an odd situation there, where some were appointed and some were civil service for a while. Also, recently, we've restructured the fire department to create a deputy chief position, and that puts our division chiefs, who were previously appointed, two levels down from the chief. So, moving on to the changes we're proposing, we really talked about, um, what are, what do we want to accomplish here? And so, the things that we wanted to accomplish were stability and predictability among leadership in the city organization, stability for appointed employees, so some reasonable expectation that if their performance was good, they could continue in their jobs, um, improving our ability to retain and recruit qualified employees, aligning our practices generally with those of other Illinois municipalities, and then also maintaining a positive and professional work environment. So, we've recommended some specific changes to the appointment process. The recommended list of positions that would remain in the appointment process is thirteen. So, that's department heads and deputy department head positions that have broad management responsibility and discretion to set policy. The city engineer and the city attorney, and those are required by state law to be appointed, and also the human rights and equity officer, who will have a significant role in city policy. All of the employees who are appointed serve the mayor, and, um, if, if ever there were concerns about their, their performance, those concerns should be addressed to the mayor. Those can be handled individually with the employees, or the mayor has the ability to terminate appointed employees before the end of their appointed term, if she finds that necessary. So, being appointed for a longer term is not an absolute guarantee that, that you're gonna hold that job until the end of the appointment. Um, positions that were appointed in June twenty twenty-one that would no longer be appointed under this ordinance are the fire division chiefs, there are three fire division chiefs, the police lieutenants, and there are four of those, the information technology manager, and the senior advisor for integrated strategy development, which is a limited-term position focused on working on the comprehensive plan. The other change would be to make, to set the terms of appointment so that they could be as long as the mayor's term. That's in Section two forty-three. Um, that doesn't mean that the mayor would always choose to appoint somebody for her full term, but she could. Some other sections, sections are revised for consistency. For example, in Section two dash seventy, talks about appointment of the finance director. That would be rescinded because that is included in Section two dash forty-two. It gets kind of confusing when you're addressing the same thing in different chapters and sections of the code. I'll also point out that, that this ordinance does not automa- automatically reappoint those thirteen individuals. So, we're, we are all at this point appointed through June, June thirty, twenty twenty-two. At some point, there would have to be another appointment process that the mayor could do. She could choose to recommend reappointment at that point for, for those individuals through the end of her term, or for some other shorter We've also recommended a couple of changes, um, in the civil service section of the code, which is two dash ninety-nine. So, there's some changes just for consistency on the appointments. We also recommended changing the extension of a probationary period so that it would not require civil service commission notification. We, we really think that if we're extending an employee's probationary period, we're doing that because we want to help that person to be successful in their position. And that should really between, be between the employee, their supervisor, and HR staff to make that happen. Um, in that case, there would be a plan to improve that employee's performance, and that would be guided by HR staff. We'd also like to extend the period for which positions can be temporarily filled to six months. Currently, it's a hundred and twenty days. Sometimes when we have a vacancy, that's not quite lo- that's not quite enough time. Um, so, that would be a fairly minor change. Um, so, in summary, we believe that the proposed changes are consistent with the goals, goals I stated earlier, stability and predictability among leadership in the city organization, stability for the appointed employees, improving our ability to retain and recruit, recruit qualified employees, and aligning our practices with those of other Illinois municipalities, and all of that would help us to maintain a positive and professional work environment. So, um, I'm sure you've all read the report, so I don't, don't think I need to go into more detail, but we're happy to answer questions.
All right, do we have any questions? Mary Alice?
I'll start us off. I'm sure a lot of people have questions. Um, so, so some of these things, I think, make a lot of sense, uh, extending the temporary position from one, one hundred and twenty days to six months, um, at the, uh, having the extension of the probation period, um, although I'd like to hear why we're removing the word discharge. I was trying to read through the strike through, and it's a little complicated freezing. Um, so, so that is, that's one question that I have. Um, I also, I don't have an issue with removing the lieutenants, um, from the appointment process. I do, however, have a question in terms of the, um, IT manager and also the special positions, and so I will, um, I will say that it was my understanding that the purpose of having appointments was because these are people who are making policy for the city, or for the city staff. That's why we have a budget director that is, um, making policy for how the, how the staff handles finance, and I would think that the person in charge of IT would be making policy in terms of how IT is handled. So, that's one. The second piece is with the special positions. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we really have, we have, um, people who are under a union contract, we have civil service, and we have appointments. Are those the three employee group classifications?
So, generally, union employees are also in civil service.
That's, yeah, yeah.
So, the, if we don't have the position for the special positions for the mayor,
I can't see that being a civil service position, and it's definitely not. So, I'm just trying to figure out, what is it, then? Does that make sense?
Right. If, if we went forward with it the way this is proposed, it would become a civil service position.
Okay, so, I do have an issue with that, but the, I'll start with those questions while other people, um, have a chance as well.
Okay. Um, so, where would you like me to begin?
Uh, why don't we begin with the whole dismissal and employee probation language?
So, I'm gonna ask Liz to comment on this in a second, but it is, it is incredibly complicated. I'm not sure anybody understands what it really means, except that it is clear that if we want to extend an employee's probationary period, we're basically telling them that they are dismissed, and that has to happen with a communication to the Civil Service Commission, which, which, um, we don't think is, um, really conducive to focusing on improving the employee's, um, performance. But I'll let Liz speak the, to this a little, because I'm not sure this has ever actually happened.
In my knowledge, it has not happened, because it is so punitive. Uh, the purpose is probation, of probation is for training and support, and when we have to add on the piece about discharge, that it simultaneously constitutes possible discharge if the person is not successful, that's incredibly punitive, and it seems to be actually contradictory to the, to the purpose of probation, which is providing that supportive training opportunity. So, by removing that automatic discharge portion, we want to focus on the training and the support, rather than the discharge and the punitive part of that.
So, if somebody, uh, does not pass their probationary period, and there's no extension, what happens to that individual?
They, they are terminated. So-
They are, they are terminated.
If you don't successfully complete probation, you are terminated unless a measure has been taken to extend your probation.
Okay, all right.
And one of the things about this, if I may just add, is the, the intent of probation is to be training.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sure. The intent of probation is to be training and to give the employee every opportunity to try and get to a level of competence, but as a practical matter now, there are certain requirements that people have to complete during a lot of our, for a lot of our jobs, right? Certain licensures, certain classes, and sometimes you really do get right up to that window of the end of probation before somebody has been able to take a test, or somebody's been able to take a class, and having to go through the civil service piece can get you, like, it could be hard theoretically to get to a civil service meeting when at eleven months is the first time they've had an opportunity to complete a, a class and take this test, and their probation's up at twelve months. So, there's also kind of a logistical, I think, aspect of it, and, um, and I think some of this language is pretty anachronistic, right? Because I think when it was drafted, people didn't really contemplate, well, somebody's discharged, but we're gonna keep them because we want to extend their probation. What does that do to their health insurance? What does that do to their start date for purposes of pension and things like that? So, there's a lot of reasons why I think early on it may have made sense, but in play today, it's a really complicated process that I think is counterintuitive to what it was trying to accomplish.
Well, my, my third question had to do with, uh, with the special positions and the, and the IT, for removing those two from the appointment process.
So, when you say special positions, you mean the special advisor for integrated strategy development?
I, I think it's a very customized position, depending on the mayor, if they're in such a position, which is why I don't think it belongs in civil service.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And so, I mean, those are, I guess, I guess it's a comment rather than a question, but if you want to elaborate in terms of why they were suggested to be put into civil service.
Yeah. I, I think our thinking when we discussed this internally was that neither of those had the same role in setting policy as the other positions that would be appointed. That's, you know, something that could be debated, it can be, you know, it can be flexible, but that was the initial thinking. I don't, Carol, did you have any other thoughts on that?
I guess the, the one thing I would add, um, in thinking about the IT manager in particular, is, um, the IT manager sets policy in a narrow way, not in a broad way, and I think that, that was part of the distinction for us, is sort of like, what's the scope of responsibility of the individuals involved? And there's a reason why IT is not a department. Uh, it's because it's, it's a, you know, it's a, for a, 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 um, a city like ours, given the, um, you know, we have, we have a small number of departments. I've worked in other jurisdictions where, you know, libraries was part of the, um, uh, city government, where, um, recreation was part of city government, human services was part of city government. Then you start getting, you know, a, a much, um, broader span of responsibility for an IT department, and, and that just doesn't exist here. So, it's really in part about scope, and, um, you know, I, I know that there's been, you know, very few things where, um, the IT manager has, has sort of asserted his prerogatives, um, and I, I, I mean, he reports to me, so he, he, he doesn't really get to overrule me, but where his technical expertise has been such that, that, um, it hasn't been a, it hasn't been a collaborative effort about setting policy, and it's really been, you know, as a, as an IT professional, I have to tell you, it must be this way. We have had very few of those instances.
Does he report directly to you, Carol?
Yes.
Okay, so how many people on this list, um, report directly to you right now?
Well, I mean, all the department heads report directly to me. Um, the city attorney reports directly to me. The human rights and equity officer reports directly to me. The senior advisor for integrated strategy development reports directly to me.
All right, so, are there, are there people who you're removing, then, who report directly to you?
The IT manager and the senior advisor-
Okay.
-for integrated strategy development. The IT manager and the Senior Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development.
Sharice, I think you were next.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask if, regarding like the Senior Advisor for Integrated Strategy, which is basically the comprehensive plan in Thinker Banner, and I can understand why that, I don't understand why it's a civil service thing, because my understanding, I thought it was a contract labor type of situation. But anyway, so I can see why that wouldn't be an appoint, we would appoint it, but then, you know, not anymore. The only, I don't have any real issue with how this has been organized. I don't think that, I think that one thing that we need to take into consideration regarding, especially moving, for example, the lieutenants and the fire division, the fire chiefs, you know, those division chiefs, to civil service, is that it is important to have a continuity of leadership, which is, everybody can't be the buck, you know, where they say the buck stops here, and the buck doesn't stop there. There's another, there's other levels that go higher than that. And for one, I would love, I want my police officers, at least, and firefighters to feel comfortable in testing out and getting extra training and everything else, to become lieutenants and to become fire division chiefs, and not having to worry about if they're going to have a job from year to year. So, and only a person who's never had to go through that would think that there's something wrong with that. So that's my two cents.
So do we have any other questions? Ask Grace.
Thank you. Where do I start? I was wondering, so with the civil service, you mentioned that this is not common, and that these rules provide a mechanism for disciplinary actions up to but not including termination, and kind of a way to get a diverse kind of hiring pool, have a little more oversight in that part where you're saying that it doesn't necessarily mean less accountability. I was trying to find it in here. So I was wondering if you could share a little bit about that, like, the mechanisms for accountability, and, you know, point us to the disciplinary mechanism that you mentioned in here for civil service. And I was also wondering if you could clarify, too, with the change that the mayor is the appointing authority for civil service positions, and how that prevents the political hires that you mentioned earlier.
In terms of the discipline, if you look in the civil service rules, there are a list of infractions that actually indicate that these would be basis for discipline, and they're quite extensive. And those are just examples. And we do prescribe to the tenants a progressive discipline. So just as you would move through progressive discipline if you're under a collective bargaining agreement, we have that same philosophy for our civil service employees. Now, what that discipline looks like and how that moves through, right, is a process that we have that is developed with departments. But there is just the same level of accountability, they just have a right to process. That's what civil service ensures them, is a right to a process, when they are being disciplined, especially if they're going to be disciplined out of a job. Appointees don't have that same right to process. They get to be removed if the mayor decides she wants to remove them. All she has to decide is if it's in the best interest of the municipality. As we've discussed before, the council can override that with two-thirds of a majority. But that's the whole point of the civil service, right, is to keep these employees protected from kind of shifting political winds, or patronage, or falling out of favor with somebody because they didn't go out and canvass for them, or something like that. But also an insurance of process for those people that are in those mid-levels. So if you wanted to see, though, the kind of infractions that they lay out, that is not all encompassing. Is that fair, Liz?
Thank you. And how about the other one about preventing the political hires? I understand what you're saying about, you know, firing, but it's still, anyway, but yeah, how that, if the mayor is still appointing to civil service versus appointing to an appointed position, and you mentioned that the civil service system, which is not common, prevents that political hire, I'm just wondering how that works? Because it seems like the mayor is still appointing.
Right. So I think what you're referring to is in the code, it refers to the mayor as the appointing authority. In reality, you know, she's not intimately involved in the workings of the Civil Service Commission.
That's like, one of the specific changes in here is changing that to mayor, right?
Right. And the reason I suggested that was because previously it said department heads. And the reality is that department heads don't go directly to the Civil Service Commission and say, well, you know, I'm going to hire this person, or I'm going to fill that position. The reality is, all that happens to HR, through HR, right? And so the mayor is our CEO, and she delegates that authority.
So if I could also add on to that, this is one of those situations, right, where the term "appointing" and "appointed" in Illinois law has now been given like seven different definitions, depending on the context. So she's not an appointing authority in the way that the appointments that we're talking about tonight are made. She's an appointing authority in terms of the fact that she appoints a civil service commission, and by extension, then she vests her power in them. So it's that whole idea of it flowing through that. And so I'm going to let Liz speak to this a little bit more, but I did just want to say this is one of those tricky situations where we have the same term being used over and over again for multiple functions.
And so we also use civil service exams for our positions. Now, those exams may be-
Liz, could you speak more directly into the microphone?
Those exams may actually be an exam, like, for firefighters or police officers, where you actually come and you take an exam that is scored. Other times, the civil service exam is based on the application, so we're looking at experience, maybe certain credentials. As Michelle spoke to you, maybe there's certain licensures that we want to look at. But there are merit principles that we look at, that's how we evaluate the applicants. And everyone receives a score based on those applications, or the exam, however that position happens to be handled.
And then, some more specific stuff. I was wondering on, like, some of the wording on the revised vision, I noticed that you changed "approval" to "advice and consent." And I was wondering what that means, why not approval, and what is the difference there? And also, I'll throw this one out, the next paragraph down, talking about the terms, and that the term of office and conditions of employment will be established by the mayor. I think that needs to be set. We ran into even that, what I found kind of an awkward moment at, was that maybe just our last meeting, appointing people where it didn't have a term limit or a term ending date? And so I think that that needs to be kind of clearly fleshed out, of making it clear what is the term of the appointment, when they're appointed, and what are those conditions of employment, if it's going to change and not be consistent with everyone?
So the advice and consent language is consistent with the way this is written in the Illinois municipal code. That's how it's described in the municipal code. That's how it says this works in municipalities. With respect to the terms, and I know Michelle's going to jump in here in a minute, I would always expect whenever an appointment is made, that there's an end date to the term. But the reason we left it to the mayor's discretion is because in some cases, she might not want to appoint someone for the whole four years. So for example, she may be appointing an interim department head for a period of six months or something. So there could be reasons why it would be a shorter term.
Yes, I agree. I just think it would be important to add that in there, that like, the term is specified when they're appointed.
Yes, we can do that.
And Section 5-12, we're taking that part out because Director of Community Development Services is still appointed, but just listed in the main appointed ones. Is that correct?
Correct. There are several positions where it's mentioned in multiple sections of the code. And so we thought, in the interest of keeping this simple, the list of appointed positions should be in 242. And those that appear in other places, we should just eliminate those sections, because it just leads to confusion.
Okay. And I was wondering also, when this would take effect? Like, we just appointed people for the next year. Like, would they be moved to civil service immediately, or at the end of their appointed term?
So I think we would probably do that as soon as possible. I mean, as a matter of procedure, we'd want to take those job descriptions to the Civil Service Commission and have them approved by the Civil Service Commission. But I don't know why we would wait if we've decided that they should no longer be appointed.
Okay. And I'm wrapping up here real quick. Okay, so I just wanted to go back real quick to the approval and, or advice and consent, but that does mean an official vote approval, correct?
Yes. As Elizabeth said, this is just getting parroted of language. And in an ideal world, this always would have used the exact language of the municipal code. So it is advice and consent, it would still require a vote.
Okay. And then I was also wondering about information to council with the bios. We had discussed a little bit about that, if there's anything else you thought we could add, the Section 2-45, inspection of records pertaining to offices, particularly because I'm not sure if all of these positions qualify as the city officer. Like, on the last round, not all of the positions on the reappointment list apparently fell under public officer, and so weren't open for examination by council. So I would like information about specifying, like, what information is available or provided, and also clarifying, or maybe aligning, so that the ones that are appointed positions, that we do have access to that information for the ones that are appointed.
Okay. So I want to make sure, and I apologize, about the section of the code I know that you're referring to, which is the request that council may have access and review records and things like that. And there was the discussion that not all of that, though, can turn around and be released to the public because of things like Personal Records Review Act. And so that is a separate piece, I think, that can stand alone, and I think that it's not mutually exclusive, that the council could still request and indicate that they require, prior to being informed enough to vote, as happened last time, they would like more information about these employees. And that's information that could be provided, then, in a public packet. And we don't have to try to worry about trying to thread a needle with this section of the code. We could leave the section of the code alone that authorizes council to have access to certain information. And then just know, in anticipation of the next vote, there could be some communication about what it is that council would like to know about these people who are up for either appointment or reappointment, kind of like what Elizabeth was able to provide last time, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Somewhat, yeah. So I think it would be good to just have information about, you know, a blanket statement, providing information to council to make a decision, like the bios that were provided that time. Just make that a usual thing. But also the issue that not every position there was, apparently fell under this allotment, so council didn't have access to all of the positions, because I was told only certain ones fell under any city officer. And so you're saying we can align that, or not? You're saying you recommend doing that separately? I don't agree with that, but...
Okay. So I just want to clarify, then, that's separate from the issue of appointment information that you're wanting, right? You want to look at that other section, just to say that at any point, not related to necessarily appointments, you want council to have access to all employee information, that it originally, under that section of the code, only had access to officer information?
No. What I'm saying is that I think it does align to appointment specifically, because on the list, the last time, for example, there was 19 positions on there. Not all of them fell under this section of, it says, "any official record, book, or paper pertaining to any city officer." And I was told only certain ones of those positions were a city officer, and some were not. So I think that it would be good to align it, so that the positions that are appointed, and the council has to make a decision on, that they have access to the information from the people in those positions. Because otherwise, we have nothing to base it off of, and have no rights to the information, and we're asked to make a decision when we don't have the information for some of the positions that might be appointed, but we don't have access to information of.
So just to be clear, I think what you're asking is you want access to personnel files for all individuals on the appointment list?
Yes. Because it seems like now, as it's written, city officer applies to most of the positions on the appointment list, but not all. And it just seems kind of strange that some would be on there, and some are not, when council was asked to make a decision on it, and we have access to only certain people or certain positions and not others. That just doesn't really make sense to me.
Can I just offer something? And as I'm reading this, don't the changes to Section 2.4, 2-42, saying, "there may be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of council, the following officers," and that's where that's captured? So everybody that you're interested in is now captured in 2-42. Is that right?
I believe that that's the accurate reading of that, then. And I apologize, I wasn't clear on whether you were saying, just in general now, you wanted access to all employee information, or if you only want that kind of access to the people on the appointment list. Since they will be listed as the following officers, then they fall under that. They'll fall under the control of that section.
So since they are listed in there as the officers, they fall under any officer in 245. Okay, thank you.
All right, Chair.
I think one kind of follow-up on some of the other questions that have been raised, and also related to Grace's last point, you know, when we're being asked to move some of these positions, I think it might be helpful, especially for the ones that Mary Alice flagged, to get more of an understanding of what are those positions and what are their responsibilities? Because again, if we're being asked to make that shift, when the supervisory structure is similar, even though I hear what you're saying, it's not policymaking, I can say for myself, at least, I, you all know this already, like, I want information in terms of what are those differences that are warranting that change. I think some of that information has been helpful, but it would be helpful to have a little bit more to kind of go off of, if we're saying that these are no longer ones that need to be appointed. It's not really a question, I guess that's other than a request for information.
So are you asking to look at the job descriptions for the positions that we're proposing to move-
Yes.
-into civil service?
Yeah. And then the other thing is, just going back to the question that was raised, and it's on Page 2, 2A, where it's changed to the mayor instead of the appointing authority, I understand the nuance around using the term "appointing authority," and essentially the mayor is the appointing authority. But it does specifically strike out the possibility of a department head, or the office in which someone, you know, their position would fall into. And I think, I didn't feel like that was very clearly answered, so I was just hoping we could go back over that again.
So just to be clear, the way this works is, HR specifically, Liz Boorman, works directly with the Civil Service Commission. So she'll work with staff from a department, she'll take their items before the Civil Service Commission. That doesn't happen. Department heads don't go directly to the Civil Service Commission and, you know, propose changes to job descriptions, or make recommendations about hiring processes, or anything like that. And so we were trying to clarify, and I think this goes along with trying to professionalize our HR functions, that that's something that happens through HR, and the mayor delegates that authority.
I think the one area that gets confusing, again, is if these are not appointed positions, helping clarify that distinction of, again, I understand that that's part of the process, sorry, moved away from my microphone, of distributing that work through HR. But again, when we're removing something from an appointment, and then the person who was previously appointing is now in the position, it's being written as that person, or their designee, right? So I do understand that, but I guess I'm just wondering if there's some way to finesse that, to provide a little bit of clarification? Because I think on the surface, it's kind of confusing.
Yeah. Let us think on that. Unfortunately, it's what Michelle said, the same word is used in different sections, and I-
Right, but that word actually is taken out. Appointing authority is taken out. And so that's not where my confusion is. I think it's just, if we're talking about something that is not an appointment, I understand taking appointing authority out, but talking about who would be doing the appointment, and now just saying the mayor, I think that that could still cause some confusion.
So I just want, I just, I want to make sure I'm following. So we have the mayor or their designee, and by default, then, that generally turns into Liz as our staff liaison. So if you have language, too, that you think would help take away this ambiguity, we'd be delighted, actually.
Well, and that might be something, too, again- Well, and that, that might be something too, again, of going back to that information about process, if there is more clarity about that process, and it doesn't have to be in the code, I understand that you're trying to juggle that, a lot of different pieces, but I think some of those process pieces are just really not clear to folks who, you know, are looking at this just at a surface level or, you know, aren't HR professionals and, and the weeds like that. So there might be other ways, but I just wanted to kind of reinforce that, I think that could be confusing for folks.
All right, Jay, are you done? All right, Chris.
The one thing I didn't like about last time was that all the candidates for reappointment were bundled into one vote. Is there any way we could specify that each position is voted on individually by council?
We can always split the vote.
Or do we have to do that by motion?
Yeah, you can do it by motion.
For us, you know, we, I guess we could do it. Okay. To be continued.
I don't know the answer to that question.
You know, actually, our, our protocol would allow us, if we had an appointment in front of us, to divide the question. We could, as a group, say, "We want to divide the question and pull this up." We'd have to agree to that, as a group, that we were going to make that change, but that, that capability is in, in the parliamentarian procedure. Mary Alice?
Are we ready for round two? Okay.
I guess, unless Charisse has a question, and I, I just, I'm going to ask a question, which I know the answer to before we go to round two, which is, we're talking here about appointments for employees, we are not talking about boards or commissions, which is another way that we use the term appointment. So my concern previously about terms was about boards and commissions appointments, it wasn't about staff appointments. So, Mary Alice, you can-
All right, so I have two, two follow-ups. Grace covered several of my questions, and Michelle, you are going to correct me if this is not legalese correct, but when I was looking at the very first sentence in section two forty-two, "There may be appointed," sounds very wishy-washy. So I'd like to propose saying, "The following officers shall be appointed by the mayor with advice and counsel from city council." I mean, it just seems more clear to say that's what's going to happen. Is that legal?
Yes, it is. What, again, "There may be appointed" is, is pulling language to try and marry it to the municipal code, but you can mandate, which is essentially what, you know, what we're doing by naming these positions. I think what it is kind of reading that way as is that if for some reason a position were deceased to exist, right, it's, it's permissive in that it's not forcing the mayor to fill that position, what may have been the intent of that "may" early on, right? But if you read it conversely, then, these positions can't exist or be filled without the appointment process, but I can see why, you know, that's just become ambiguous.
Yeah, it's very, very ambiguous. My, my second thing has to do with terms of office. So if, and, and just, so I actually want to take away for the moment the reappointment process, because that's what's fresh in our memory right now, but when we get a new employee, anybody who's on this appointment list that's going to be hired comes to city council for approval, right now. So if we take them off of that appointment list, that means city council will not have a vote in that manner. So I do think that, I don't know the language, but I would like to have for that appointed process that the, the terms of the office is included. So if that's, if the mayor decides three years, if the mayor, to the end of the term, whatever, four years or whatever, but that's included in part of that process. I'm not sure how to write that in here, but that was something that I, I'm thinking about.
So you just want to make sure when she brings the appointments that the term is specified?
That the term is specified, yes, because right now it says, "The terms of the office and conditions of employment for appointed employees of the city shall be established by the mayor." And that, so I just want that piece to be included with the appointment by city council, so we would-
I don't know that there would be a problem with us adding something along, along the lines of, "The term of appointment shall be specified at the time," or something like that.
Okay, all right.
At the time that it's brought, I think we could clarify that.
At the time that appointment is brought up, or, yeah, for a vote or whatever.
And we, and we do that with boards and commissions.
I know, I know, but I just want to reflect it in that.
Gotcha.
Almost all the time.
Yeah, we did have some last week with no term ending date, so not always.
Well, and that was for city council members.
Yep. Charisse?
I was going to just piggy, now finally, something I feel like I could piggyback on, along what Mary Alice was saying regarding the term, because most elected officials federally and locally or whatever, you, when there's an appointment, the mayor gets to choose who she's going to choose, and we can yea or nay it, you know, one way or the other. If she's, if he or she, if they, let me be, let me be real, if they have determined who they want for, to fulfill a particular appointment, as any of us would if we were actually the mayor, or the governor, or, or the president, they get to pick who they want to have their back on particular, in particular positions. I see nothing wrong with specifying the term of the mayor's, you know, for the mayor's term of office, and in, in the event that a person is, because we still get to vote them out if they're appointed, if, you know, if they're in an appointed position and we have an issue with that appointment, we still do get to say hello, you know, you're not doing your job. We can go to her, and she can tell them, not, they're gone. We can still go to her. So we still have that power to, to say something, and of course, it will come down to her, but it will still be something that we can let her know if we, if there's a particular appointment that we don't have any, that person, we don't have any confidence in that person's abilities or what they're doing. Am I correct, or am I wrong in that? I know we can't, okay, we can't appoint, we can't vote them out, but we can go to her and have her take care of it, or them.
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
Whoever they may be.
Absolutely, there is nothing to preclude anyone, you know, from going to the mayor and expressing concerns about an appointee, and the mayor just needs to make a determination. If they're persuaded that it's in the best interest of the municipality, then that mayor can go in and remove. So absolutely, criticism can be raised, concerns can be brought at any point in time, but yeah, we do need to be clear that it is only the mayor who can come forth and initiate that removal. So that, that is what, you know, that process would be.
Okay. So, yeah, I, that's why I think it's important that, that the mayor, whoever they may be, actually have the opportunity to point that person throughout their term. If they, if that, if that, if they're not satisfied with it, they know what they want, they know what they're looking for, but everybody kind of, you know, any elected official usually gets to, to have their cabinet, so to speak, for their term. And if they're just filling out or finishing, it's like what we do with the boards and commissions, you, you know, you're finishing up to the mayor's term. It may be six months, or it may be two years or something, but you're finishing out her term, or maybe you're not, it depends on, apparently, what that person is trying to... So I don't see, I, I think that we should be able to have all of that language, if we're going to have anything, all of that language.
I, I think we did try to write it in a way, right, that gave the mayor the discretion that the mayor is authorized to have, that you're, you are authorized to authorize the mayor to allow appointments up to the mayor's term under state law, up to the end of the mayor's term. So we tried to write it in a way that the mayor could come forth and put an appointee forward through the end of their term, and we can put in that language saying that whenever the mayor brings a person forward, they have to be specific about what term it is they're bringing this candidate forth, so it would have a sunset on it, whether it's the end of the mayor's term, or whether it's one year. And the way we wrote it does not preclude the mayor from coming forth and saying, "You know what? I've decided either this position is new, or for whatever reason, I only want this to be a one-year appointment." It doesn't lock the mayor into doing only appointments through the end of their term. The mayor could come with a lesser term if the mayor determined that was appropriate. This is just vesting that authority in the mayor to make the determination as to the term they seek.
Okay, and, and just know, you know, however, no term of appointment for any appointee shall exceed the appointing, appointing mayor's elected term. And I guess what I'm looking for, what I would like to see is the languages of, of all that, that it, that it can be, it can be, that appointees are appointed for the term of the elected mayor in addition, or as well as what, what, whatever the appoint, the appoint, appointed one is required for, you know, just something a little bit more specific, I guess, because it, it adds, I, I think it helps for whoever's getting that appointment to also be more ready for the end of their term or the end of whatever in moving on. And I don't, I don't know, I guess I was also looking for something more regarding what if the person resigns or appointed. I know it said something about they would have to be in, they would be in their, in their position until there's another person appointed, but how do you keep somebody-
There's some language in the municipal code-
Yeah.
-that says, for these appointed positions, if the, the incumbent basically would continue to serve until a replacement is appointed.
Yeah, actually, I didn't understand that. It said even if they resign, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, it doesn't make sense, because they'll probably go away and they won't be here to do their work anyhow. But, but I, I get, I'm thinking maybe that was intended to cover the end of the mayor's term, so the new, the, you know, the new mayor may not have had time to decide how they want to fill those positions, or they might want to work with the existing staff for a while to see if, you know, if they suit. And so, yeah, because, because clearly, whatever is the last day of the mayor's term, I don't think every single appointed person can just pack their bags and leave. I mean, it, it would be, you know, a mess.
So that, that would be helpful, because I read that wrong. I think I read that as the appointee resigning, but what it was referring to was the mayor resigning? Because an appointee can't continue to do their work if they resign.
So I think it, this is one of those situations too, where I'm trying to speculate as to what was in the mind of Illinois legislatures fifty or more years ago, and I'm probably not being successful at it, but I think it was designed to maybe anticipate a couple scenarios, right? So if we've announced in the law that a mayor can't appoint past the end of their term, what does that mean? Like, does the building shut down, the lights go off on the first day of the next mayor's term, because all the appointees are gone? So I think this was trying to possibly, I'm going to invite Dave to speculate with me if he would like, to contemplate the idea that you need to keep everything running until the new mayor gets in and can make a decision of appointments, but it's also trying to protect the integrity of the appointment process by not vesting that person who was that appointee for that term with a property interest in that position now, such that the mayor can't come in and just say, "Well, now they're gone and they're done." So they're going to kind of sit there as a placeholder. Now, it doesn't really, oh, and I think later it does, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, I think it does have an abandonment provision. Oh, and I did not bring my bifocals back. But I think it has kind of a provision of what you do in a case of abandonment, so they are treating resignation separately from the idea of an office being completely abandoned and left empty. This is one of those, you know, older terms and-
Yeah, there, there are two sentences in that subsection of the municipal code, and one talks about resignation, but in this very same subsection, it says, "If there's a failure to appoint a municipal officer, or the person appointed fails to qualify, the person filling the office shall continue in office until a successor has been chosen and has qualified."
Okay, I'm not sure if we brought that to a conclusion. Do we have other questions before we accidentally drift into discussion? Do you have a question?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you, Grace.
Uh, yes. A question was about, just some clarification of the mayor wanting to appoint someone else in the middle of a term, and saying that does require approval from council and a supermajority vote, is that correct? So if, say, you know, the mayor appoints someone for four years, and then two years in, they wanted to reevaluate and potentially appoint someone else, that requires council approval, is that correct, or no?
No, council actually gets a right of override. So the mayor would come and she would, you know, or he would, or they would announce to you that they are removing an appointee from office, and they would provide a reason, and then council can override that removal if, if council decides, you know, this person should stay through this term of appointment with a two-thirds majority. Otherwise, if council does not affirmatively act to override, that person is removed from office, and then there is a vacancy for appointment. And this does speak to abandonment in here and what you do in a situation, I apologize.
Okay, so they do need to come before council, and then they could override with a supermajority vote, but otherwise not. And is that specified in here, in a different part of the code?
That is in a different provision of the code, and I can email you that citation. It's a couple of sections back from this, this original section.
Thank you, the rest are comments.
All right. Any other questions? So I would entertain a motion, it sounds like we have some work that we will be doing between now and city council meeting, so this would be a motion without recommendation, perhaps?
I was even going to move to keep it in committee. I feel like I need a lot more time to go through all of these details, and I'm not ready to pass it along yet. Should I motion and see, if we can say?
You can make a motion, yes.
Okay, I have motioned to keep in committee ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight dash zero three eight, and ordinance amending city code, chapter two, administration, sections two four two, appointment two four three, term two seventy, appointment two nine nine, civil service system, chapter five, building fire flood safety code, section five two, appointments, and chapter twenty-five vegetation, section two, no, twenty-five forty-eight, appointment.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to keep this in committee discussion.
I just have a question.
Yes, Mary Alice.
My question to the staff is, do you feel like you have enough information that you would be able to provide us with some answers and some other suggested language?
I have a lot of notes here, so I, I need to go through my, through my notes in the, in the light of day and, and think about that, yes, but I, I think if you, if you felt you were ready to do this next week, we would find a way to have a revised ordinance ready for you.
Well, I was, I was on the fence in terms of whether or not we were going to keep this in committee or send it with no recommendation, but I'm fine with keeping it in committee.
I, I would ask, staff, are you okay with another cycle to let us process this more deeply?
Yes.
We're, we're here for you.
Okay.
I would, I would ask if you have more suggestions, please email them to Elizabeth, copy your council, fellow council members with a "do not reply," and so, so we get all the questions, concerns, and suggestions out there.
Yes, Mary Alice, will you take the chair for a moment?
Yep, I will take the chair, and the chair recognizes James.
Yeah, I think this is an important decision, and I think we have to work through this. There's been a lot of great questions tonight. I, I have developed some thoughts in the process, and so I would welcome another cycle of committee review before it goes to council. But I, I am going to ask that if, if there are things that people are stuck on, reach out in the next two weeks and, and push those forward so that we don't have to work through things we're stuck on here, that we have, we give staff a chance to process this and think about it. I can tell we've given them some things to think about tonight that, that weren't actually on their radar, so I, I would just, I would just ask that we, if, if we have real strong questions, and I would appreciate having this conversation with Chandra here, that's one of the reasons why I am comfortable with a delay, but we made progress, and I'm okay with progress as long as we're, we drive to a conclusion. Thank you.
All right, and I relinquish the chair.
So are we ready to vote on the question of keeping it in committee? All, I, I believe, because we're keeping it in committee, that can be a voice vote. Let's do a, let's do a roll call, just to be sure, because it's an ordinance.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. We'll keep that in committee? Um, do we have any council input or communications tonight? Grace.
Yes, thank you all, um, quickly, I got the clock, there we go, oh, okay, uh, just wanted to talk about a few points, um, slash questions, um, talking about hybrid meetings again, um, I was wondering if we're still waiting on more word from the state level, if that's okay for hybrid participation for the public, especially with the COVID cases increasing and only fifteen people in here, I think that would be great, and if not, potentially requesting that it is allowed, you know, um, positioning the governor or the state to allow that hybrid public participation with an executive order or whatever it would take to make that possible, if it's not possible already, um, I was also, uh, just wanted to update about enforcing the human rights ordinance, I've had some conversations with Carla Boyd, our human rights and equity officer, and it sounds like her and the, uh, human relations commission are doing some good things, and, um, so hopefully we can partner with them in making sure that we don't have that discrimination in our housing and employment and our businesses are following that human rights ordinance, uh, I was also wondering about the use of force policy and if that's a presentation or if we're approving something and, um, why it's not going to committee of the whole.
All right, um, anybody else to have council comments?
I was just going to say one thing that I caught when I was watching one of the commissions, is that there's going to be a neighborhood cleanup coming up, I think, was it September twenty-third, I don't know, Mayor, if you know the exact date, and that people can actually sign up in certain neighborhoods, um, at, by September tenth, anyway, it would be great if we could provide that for next time, so that the public knows when that neighborhood cleanup is.
Uh, we can get that information.
Perfect.
Thanks, thank you.
And as far as the use of force policy, it is a, it is a presentation, the policy is done, and the council does not vote to approve that policy, the council doesn't approve any of the, um, operational policies in the city, so it's, it's a presentation, but, um, as you'll find out next week, um, we'll go into detail on the engagement, the input, and this, this, uh, final draft was written in very close collaboration with the NAACP and the ACLU, but anyway, it'll be a presentation.
All right, do we have other council input? Chris? Um, well, Mayor, help me out, because I thought in January, this council did deny Chief Seraphin's first proposal for the use of force policy, because it didn't emphasize de-escalation, which Mary Alice Wu wrote in, and wrote into the use of force policy, and then the NAACP and the ACLU got, got involved to rewrite it, so wasn't there a denial of the use of force?
No, it was, it was a, um, it was presented, and there was a great deal of public comment and concern about it, including from the NAACP, ACLU and community members, so we went back to the drawing board, so no, there was no vote, it was, it was just, okay, this, you may think this is done, but it's really not done, and, um, I think you're going to be very, um, I'm very proud of this final product, it does reflect the commitment to de-escalation, it reflects the ten shared principles, the resolution on systemic racism, and it also aligns with the, um, police reform legislation and the trailer bill that was passed this spring, so the, one of the reasons it took longer than anyone expected is, um, we also have the state legislation to make sure we were aligned with as well, so actually, the timing has been very good as far as revising this policy.
And we do have the police department's approval of it, at this point.
The police department was intimately involved in this as well.
Okay.
I mean, all the, all the players who needed to be there were there, so, so yes, I think, I think you'll be very pleased.
Any other council comments? Seeing nobody raising their hands, I'm going to say that we have completed our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you.